Being to order as there been Declaration of Public Notice.
Yes.
First item on the agenda is public appearance, but seeing none. We will move to the next item, Correspondence and Announcements. One that's in your board docs is the invitation and letter welcoming back teachers and everyone is invited to attend the breakfast from 7:30 to 8:30, four members, in addition to staff, on Tuesday morning, August 26th. So that's 7:30 to 8:30 in the morning, and then the program follows after that. And Dan is the king of this year, so there will be a lot more time for your staff. It would be nice to see people there if you can do that before you head off to work. And the other thing I have is if we wanted to submit a resolution for the delegate assembly, those are due September 15th, meaning we would need to be thinking about it by the next meeting. I don't have anything in mind off the top of my head. I got this resolutions booklet in the mail if anyone wants to look at it. It's the resolutions as they stand. Do you want to hand that to Peter?
Who's our noise?
Peter.
I'm our delegate?
Yeah, I remember.
Oh, I don't.
Well, it's not till January, so.
Yeah.
But you might well look through that and just see if there is anything. And, you know, we have had some in the past, and ours have gotten through, so I haven't, I don't have anything in my mind, but if you want to look at those. And I think that might be available online. If it isn't, if anyone wants another copy, I can get another copy. They're pretty simple last year's, too. Dan, did you have anything else?
No, that's all we had for announcements, and I'm not sure if any of our other administrators have any tonight.
Okay. Then we'll move on to the superintendent reports.
Okay. Great, thank you. Okay, on your board docs, you can see I'm going to report on our district communication plan, and before I do that, just real quickly, one thing that wasn't on there, just a, sort of a quick update. As you, we've, you know, the board is aware, we've approved a new transportation vendor this year, Nelson Bus Service, and gotten a lot of comments about the bus parked in front of the high school. I believe we have, we have one in Cottage Grove as well, saying, you know, we're hiring drivers. And just to clarify, things are going extremely well. Every bus transportation service does this at this time of year. They're always looking for additional drivers, for substitutes and so on, and so that's nothing out of order. In fact, we did that ourselves when we were hiring our own drivers. So Jared can perhaps expand upon that a little bit on how that's going, but.
Yeah, so they all have enough bus drivers to cover all of our regular routes, and so the purpose of that is just to drum up additional substitutes to have on call per their agreement with the district. In addition to that, and obviously, they also have other school districts that they're looking to have employees for.
What percentage of our drivers are will be driving this year?
Can I, let me get back to you. I don't know exactly the number, because we've had still some that were fluctuating, but we do have a number of Badger Bus drivers that were in our routes here in Manona. Three of those have came over, so. I know that we talked about that today.
I've always felt if people are going to use our land, they should pay the price for advertising on that property, personally. I mean, it's prime, it's prime, it's prime location.
You, I don't mean to make light of this, but to be honest, that's a policy decision that we really should have, board policy that we govern that, and we certainly should talk about that. My initial thought is the fact that that's one of our vendors that we work with, it's a little bit different arrangement, but yeah, it'd be worthy of discussion. Okay? And then, the other thing that we're going to report on tonight is our communication plan. So Doreen Dembski, who has worked with us to develop the plan, is here tonight. I'm going to go through the plan, and then Doreen will be here or be able as well to answer any clarifying questions. And you have a copy of the actual plan on your board docs. There's also a PowerPoint that has the highlights of it, so I'm going to go through the PowerPoint and refer to the plan. I'm not going to go through every page line by line, you certainly can read it, but really talk about, I think, the key pieces that maybe you haven't heard yet. You'd certainly have gotten some information previously as a board, and then honestly, it's an opportunity for you to ask, you know, questions and follow up as well. So, the first, can we?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Okay. There we go. Thank you. Okay, the communication plan, you see on the title, May 2014 through June 2015, meaning that we've already begun implementing it. In fact, there's been a number of things that throughout the year that we've begun. So we meant it to be an annual plan to get us off the ground this first year, and there's certainly some things referenced in it to, you know, for the future as that as well. Okay, on the background, beginning on page five, there's some, you know, information prior to that. We have our mission and vision, of course, everything that we do, we want to tie to that and student learning. But on the background, some of the key points that I think are really important to, that in development of this plan that serves as a basis. Okay, number one, we had a board goal regarding communication, and that was really the first thing that led to the development of the need for a formal plan. We began formally gathering information back in November of 2013 to put this together. And then, as I mentioned, thirdly, concurrently with writing the plan, there are a number of things that will be implemented already with regard to e-newsletters, website, some social media, and, you know, board communication. Next slide, I think, is really important, and this is also stated on page five of the document, the purpose of the plan. And I think that's really key, is why do we need a communication plan? Why is communication important? I think it goes without saying that communication we have to have to our parents and those people as key stakeholders, but who are the stakeholders and what is it we're about? So if you don't mind, I would like to just read through this statement, because I think it's really important. Okay, "The district desires to sustain a positive reputation and a culture of communication through utilizing a strategic communication plan that will further build relationships and demonstrate an equal commitment to all stakeholders that it serves. The district desires to improve communication with both internal and external audiences." And if you recall, when we started this plan, and we, it started with the board workshop a year ago, we developed goals. At that time, I'd been in the district for a couple of months, and I think the initial discussion really was about external communication. How do we communicate to our community and key stakeholders, what we're doing in the district? And I, at least, initially didn't really emphasize the internal. I looked at it as that's just part of my job to have the internal communications, and that really didn't need to be part of the formal plan. Well, as we went along, and as you are well aware, about mid-year, we had a number of, you know, very important issues that became for the district, and internal communication in some cases broke down or was lacking, you know, perhaps from where it should have been. And so it was very clear that that needed to be included in part of the plan in a very formal way as well, and to make sure that we are having strong internal communication. So at that point, we did make sure we added that and as an equal part of this plan. Okay, the scope of the plan, and this is pretty important as well, that we're looking at initially just one major internal and external goal. The idea is that we want to make sure that it's sustainable, that we, that whatever we begin, we finish, and we keep, you know, doing. And also the recognition of the limited resources we have right now to incorporate this, that we don't want to have a plan that we don't believe that we can, you know, follow through on. Now, there's some things on here that we've talked about that we'd like to do, and it'll depend on the commitment that we have to resources in the future. Okay, so that's our background information, so let's get right to the goals. In the external communication, the overarching goal, develop at least three sustainable communication processes to disseminate general information, promotional information about the district by August 2014, where we're at right now, and add at least two more sustainable processes by January 2015. We want to make sure they're easily accessible, proactive, and open, and they promote our district. And then, in the long term, we want to eventually increase this to seven sustainable strategies. So what are those seven strategies? Number one, redesign, reorganize the district website. You're well aware that we've been talking about that, you have yet to receive the results of it. I want to clarify why it's not up and running at this point, because we've talked a little bit about the delays, and initially, we wanted to have a target date of June or July, and it's really came down to the idea that one of our key employees left the district that was really heading up the district organization of that. And it's not a matter, it's not the technical piece. The technical piece is easy, to put together the page and so on, it's the content that needs to be developed. What is it that we want to have on our website? And it really was a complete redesign. There's very, there's an awful lot that's on our current site that we don't want, there's a lot of things that we don't have that we want to add, so it really was like starting from scratch. And so when that individual left the district back in May, we really have had about a three month hiatus that we really have had, trying to put together those pieces. We've asked for more support from Doreen and her team to help pick that up, but that's what really have set us back. We don't have, that was such a key individual in the organization piece of it, that it was very difficult to recover from that. And so we are very close, and we were hoping to have, I believe, the clone, it's going to, is that what it's called?
Yeah, clone site.
Is, is going to be very soon within the next week or two.
Yeah, I'm hoping for the end of next week, which we were discussing just this afternoon.
Okay, great. Okay, so that's a key, it's honestly one of our very key communication devices and, you know, our strategies with that. Okay, secondly, deploy at least one or one external newsletter per year. Right now, we have at our annual meeting, there's a large packet that Jared and his staff put together, and actually, our administrators contribute to that, and we have it available for anyone who comes to the annual meeting. We have those available for people that, you know, come to the district, but we don't mail them out, and there's a lot of good information. We're going to rewrite that and, basically, as more than annual report, and have it, you know, available electronically as well. So we're not going to mail it to every household in the district, but we'll have it much more accessible. Eventually, that might be a strategy we want to do, there's a tremendous cost with that as well, but it is something that we have, that we want to get that out more. So from the district level, we certainly have our school newsletters that go out on a regular basis. We need to get more information out at the district level. So we're going to start with just the one annual newsletter or annual report. We'll determine later whether we might want to have more of a quarterly or a couple a year, but again, because of the expense, until we have the resources for that, we'll start with that first one. So that, we have some work to do in these next six weeks to get that done, but we're going to have that ready for the annual meeting. Okay, the third, with regard to developing digital materials and presentations, again, a number of ways that we can communicate, not just things that are on the website, but as we, you know, look at, and this one, I'm going to ask maybe Doreen to step in and just expand a little bit about the types of things we're talking about, of different types of materials and so on.
Okay, so when we talk about digital, you know, that covers a range of things. We started with an internal e-newsletter, and one of the strategies we piloted was parent newsletters at the site level, at the school level. So we built in time in the next few weeks to meet with each school now and discuss how we'll help them get their newsletters online and distribute it via very different, various modalities. So we'll send it out in text, or we'll post it on Facebook, and we'll get their newsletters out there on a digital basis. We want to also develop some materials for the, for the district's website that, I met with the new videographer, we just had an informational meeting to see what his capacity was and how that might be incorporated into your plan. We shared some initial ideas, and I, you know, I don't want to speak for him, but he had, he was very interested in helping in this way. So trying to incorporate more of the video, how we'll get that out. Website first, we can put it on Twitter, we can do a lot more, social media. Talked about adding Twitter with the schools, working first with those who want to, and adding to that. So anything to bring more digital to your materials, that's where we're going. And it takes first a few to help them figure out the logistics, and then the content, and then off and running they go. You know, it's just getting them started. I have no doubt you'll be well on your way by the mid-year.
You know, the biggest thing when we look at our, the staff we have right now as far as the resources, we have a lot of people in the district that have the technical expertise or can be trained to how to post and how to do this and that. Our biggest challenge is, is writing and determining the content, and that's where we really are not in a very good place right now. I think we have some individuals that are capable, but it's going to require some training, and that's where the support is really coming to help. What is it that we want to share? What are the stories we need to get out there and why? And not just because we've always done this before, we need to do much more, and that's the idea of the strategic part of it. So for instance, on number four, the social media, as we mentioned, the Facebook page. To set that up logistically, yeah, very simple process. You set up the page, here's the parameters on it, but the key is what about the content? How, who's going to post? How are we going to do it? And that was something that Gina Thousand originally did. Right now, Joyce has taken it over and has done a tremendous job, but it's not an easy thing. What we do is we regularly, with our principals and our teachers, ask them, take pictures of all the, you know, unbelievable, you know, number of activities we have going on, but we need captions with those pictures. And so when we send them in, okay, it's not just a matter of someone on their personal Facebook just putting a quick quote. We're representing our school district, we want them, well-written, clear messages, and so our teachers, principals, you know, staff will write those, Joyce will clean them up, sometimes ask for more information, and it's a process back and forth before we're ready to say we're going to go ahead and post this, because once they're there, you know, they're there. And so I think we've done a really good job of keeping up, it's been a little bit, you know, slower in the summer, but it's, it's something that is, it's, it's not just a matter of, you know, providing this, because people that look on there, it is, the history is there as well. And so it's one piece, for some people, it might be for finding information about events, but it's also, we look at, you know, community members, prospective parents, about, this is again, another presence, so it's just one small piece, but.
And one of the things that we set up and can be used by any of, you know, the staff members that are trained to use your social media, we set up a social media strategy calendar. It's out on your Google Drive, Gina and I worked on that, we're sharing it with Joyce and perhaps Maureen now. And, you know, it's a place where we don't have to always be thinking about Facebook. You get the ideas in an email, you store them there, when the day comes, I'm trying to get to the point where I can teach them how to use some social media management tools, so you can really get efficient at it. So the content that's available, it's not this big burden to do, it's more streamlined, we know where to go, plus using the calendar to sort of think through ahead the big things that, you know, 4K registration, big things that are coming that are, but they're very important to put out there and not to let them slide by. So we do have a tool up in Google Drive for the folks here to use and organize themselves around and make this more streamlined. So I think, again, it's just a matter of time.
Okay, and then the next page, final five or three strategies. We already mentioned creating the school-based e-newsletters, number six, the media strategy with the local media outlets. We're certainly aware of, you know, our local, you know, the Independent Herald and some of the other outlets, but some of the things that we're looking to explore, not necessarily media, the local chamber, you know, the Manona Chamber in particular, they have their own newsletters that go out, and we in fact, we talked about that this morning, about, you know, can we, what piece can we have on there? They have given us some information. I'll be following up with their new executive director to talk more about how we can partner on the work that they're doing to get our message along with them as well. And so that's another opportunity that I don't think we've really taken advantage of as much as we could, and, and we need to continue to explore those other types of partnerships. And then the last piece, you know, I think Doreen touched on, the video multimedia piece.
Also an open opportunity for the senior center.
That's a good example.
Thank you, yes. And so I think we have some things that we're aware of, and it's a matter of doing those, number one, and then trying to find more opportunities as well. And the other challenge we have is, again, to make sure that we're not, it's both communities, you know, the Manona and Cottage Grove communities, and to me, it appears the opportunities in Manona are a little bit more established and easier, and I think we need to really look and work harder to establish, you know, more of that presence in Cottage Grove as well. Okay, and then so in your actual document, there's a lot of information about, you know, some of the things we talked about, the tactics and more of the specifics of that. I did on the PowerPoint just highlight the objectives, and I'll just kind of go through these quickly, but we've talked about objective one, redesigning the website, but the real key is, again, who is our audience? We spent a lot of time in this developing it. Who looks at our website? And this is primary, certainly there's other people, but the primary would be existing families and prospective families and staff, and that's one of the things we talked about. You know, you'll get a report in the near future, you've heard that we have had a lot of hiring this year. Well, when we're out, and that's one of the key things we're doing with the compensation plan, we want, we keep talking about attracting, you know, quality employees. Perspective teachers and prospective employees, the first thing they're going to do when they see we have an opening is go look at our website and find out where we're at, and so, or find out what they can about the district, and that is a very important piece. Not the only thing that's going to sell our district, but it is an important piece of it, and so we need to keep that in mind as well. And then when we do have things that are not for families and staff, but that might be more community-based, in the future, we talk about facilities and so on, that will be an important piece that we need to direct people to certain places, it's got to be very clear, be able to navigate and find those, you know, areas, so. But we've talked a lot about the audience in each of these objectives. Okay, the second one, again, more about the, again, the opportunities, present academic focus and successes. We all know how important it is to talk about the good things that we do, but again, what are the formal communication channels that we're doing it? We can't just leave it by, by chance, and we got to be very clear about how we're going to do that. So that's, again, much broader audience, community at large, families, prospective parents, and so on. And then the third key objective, and the external piece, again, seeking various opportunities, present academic focus and successes to the communities, expand parent communication. So that's, again, our, our parent stakeholders, and making sure we're really communicating well there. So, why don't I pause there for a second? So that, that's the outline overview of the external communication piece. And again, there's a little bit more detail in the plan and.
So as an example, on the district website, there are, on the homepage, the page you land out if you search Manona Grove, there's slots or spaces for four impactful pictures, and each of those pictures represent a story about the Manona Grove School District. And we worked with Andrew to identify, and we have a plan in place to update those stories that will be key caption on the front page that demonstrate, so I was here during the Antarctica presentation, and someone said, well, we should get that on our webpage. Well, this would be the slot, right? That would be key focus there, and then that caption would lead you to a read more if people wanted to inquire more, see the full press release. We then can use that as a way to promote what the opportunities are in the Manona Grove School District. So when we sought and talked about those stories, what would they be, we really went back to the key messages. What are we trying to help parents perceive, you know, prospective residents, community members? What do we want them to know about our district? What's your story? And Andrew was very good at identifying them. We did a story on music, we did a story on science, but they're stories, they're not, they're not just pictures, but they're pictures and stories, and it done well. And one of the strategies then behind that would be to have that calendar, something we have built into his meet monthly, talk about all the communication efforts. What's the next story we're going to write? What story belongs on that front page? What can we be highlighting and promoting? So that's just an example of how we would be using one of your tools to tell about the academic successes and give, and going back to purpose, building that and continuing to promote that reputation you have. So when Dan talks about content, you know, I, I see all these different ways that it all inter, it's all interwoven, but it's strategic in that we've talked about what those stories should be, and how do we use the one tool of the website to tell it? How do we use the e-newsletter to tell it? How do we use social media? So I don't know if that helps, but that's an example of how this tool comes, this plan comes to life when you start implementing it. What's the plan for staffing the stories? Well, right now, I have a freelance writer who did the writing for Dan. He, I asked if he would like to do that, and we did, and that is a discussion that Dan has to decide, is how do you get those stories written?
So the first four stories that we chose, you know, Doreen referenced, one is called Making Music Together, and that's highlighting the high school music program, particularly the show choir and the musical performances there. The Joy of Writing is middle school writing project that is highlighted, and then we have one regarding 4K, Team Enough to Teach 4K with our collaborative approach there, and then the Antarctic Adventure. So those are the first four, and we kind of came up, I think Andrew was instrumental in helping, you know, identify some of the key programs. I think you all can look at the things that we're proud of as a district. I'm thinking, you know, again, the arts, our, our strengths program, the elementary. Well, the people that have been involved with the school district are well aware of it. If you're a prospective parent looking at our district and you, you know, that is a huge, you know, attraction. Well, have, we really put it out there, what it's about and that opportunity, and we have a lot of those. And so I don't think it's going to be hard to come up with ideas, it's just a matter of getting them organized, and as we said, in the short term, we've, we've got some help to write those, that's something we need to determine in the future, is how we're going to, you know, maintain that. We are committed to maintain that, but we have some work to do as far as how we're going to do that. Okay, any other questions on the external communication objectives?
But Dan, one of the things is, and I'm not sure, I'm guessing we'll just wait until we get past that, is your thought, on the PowerPoint, there wasn't any of that structure that kind of gave the, what's been done in that timeframe for going forward, those pages, seven through.
At the end of, yeah.
You're going to go, they aren't, they weren't on the PowerPoint, I just want to make sure we're going to cover those, because that's where my questions are.
Okay, we can, and I guess I wanted to highlight kind of the plan and then, but absolutely, we can talk about that.
Perfectly right, I just wanted to know, because those pieces are here, and I wanted to wait, and if he wasn't going to go through that, I didn't know how to, okay, great, super.
Okay, let's talk about the internal communication. The first piece, again, the goal, I think, is important about, we understand the importance of internal communication, but to really make sure we clearly define what are we trying to do. And so we talked about the goal of at least two sustainable, sustainable communication processes to disseminate general and advanced information about district initiatives, news, you know, and so on, and then at least two more processes by January of 2015. So again, instead of just, well, as information comes up, send out an email or this or that, we want to really formalize the process to make sure that we have that on a consistent basis. So our strategies to do so, we came up with three. First of all, creating electronic communication tools. Secondly, again, proactively identifying the topic communications strategies for staff as issues are identified, and that's the key piece that we learned last year about trying to be more proactive, anticipating in advance what things the staff do need to, you know, get information about on a timely basis. And then the third piece, again, the recognition of our employees' achievements and contributions. So I think with that, again, the item two is probably the, has to me, been the biggest challenge, to make sure that we're identifying those areas. So with that, the specific objectives, number one, again, incorporating that, an area for dedicated staff information on the website. Right now, when you go on our website and under, you know, human resources or business resources, a lot of information that's really meant for staff only, it's not necessarily confidential, but we need a real clear place that we know, the staff know, here's where I can go to get, you know, information. So again, a much better communication tool than we have right now. In some cases, there's a lot of searching involved to find the pieces that you're looking for. Okay, secondly, at least monthly, dedicate time to discuss issues that we may need, special topic communication plans, and deploy one necessary. We've talked about, you know, at our administrative team meetings, it's important that when we're talking about things that we're doing, having communication is part of it. What do we need to communicate and why? Also, in the short term, right now, I'm working with Doreen as a sounding board. Here's all the things that we have in our agendas, sharing with her to help, again, from her side of eyes about, okay, here's our things that might be hot topic, you know, hot button items and so on, and to really be, again, strategic about coming in in advance how we're going to do this. So putting that process that's just a regular part of what we do is identifying communication opportunities. And then the third objective is the recognition piece, about looking at what we're doing right now for recognition, evaluating it, and then, again, formalizing the process. This is one that I think in some respect, we do some very good things, but making sure, again, that's part of a formal plan.
Dan, the, the recognize employees' achievement and contribution, I think you can, I think you can make human interest stories around teachers, spread it around the schools. It's not only, is it internal communications, but it, it puts a face and a life to teachers in this district, so whether it's realtors or people looking to move here, you know, I, I think it's just not recognizing the, you know, the social. So whether it's realtors or people looking to move here, you know, I, I think it's just not recognizing the, you know, the social studies teacher of the year, whatever it might be. But, but kind of bring it to life and a little, the extra things they do and that, that type of thing. I think can not only give some life in the internal, but I think as, as much as showing off the show choir, you could show off a, a teacher of, that's doing interesting things. A veteran teacher over the years and here's what, here's what one college graduate who had that person in third grade or something, you know what I mean? You know, bring it to life and that, that type of thing. And both recognizes and it also, it also communicates and sells, if you will.
That is a really good point. And when we talked earlier late, as you mentioned, about the external piece, it does tie hand in hand with the internal. And I think, I initially was thinking on the internal about when we do our internal newsletters, making sure we have recognitions on a regular basis there. Not just waiting up till the end of the year, recognitions and, you know, someone wins an award, you know, type of thing. But that's a really good point to making sure that we're sharing those internally as well.
And that's part of the, one of the tactics is to survey what we, or kind of inventory what we do now in September through November of this year and adding that, what you just said to that.
So those objectives, again, as I mentioned, on the PowerPoint, I didn't put all the tactics. We've talked through some of them there in writing, but we can certainly expand upon any of those if there's questions. And I don't know, Doreen, if there's anything to add on.
I just want to reiterate the importance of what Dean just said. There's a recently released book called School Communication That Works. It's written by Candice Segard. And in there, he represents twenty years of research that says what's important to the community. And he, he presents an information pyramid, right? Like a journalist would. And at the very top of that is quality of teachers. So that's a very important story to tell that meets your purpose for multiple reasons. But in the end, right, that's what we do. We, we teach children. So it's an excellent idea and substantiated by what people want to know about. That's what your community wanted to know about. They want to know about your teachers and the kids and what they do. So perfect point.
I would just add to that, again, that whole thought process about the MG grads who have come back here to teach and the story that they could tell. There's, there's just, you know, a lot of different pieces. And interviewing community members that have been Manona Grove grads who have come back and volunteered in the classroom. I mean, there's, there's some wonderful, so I think it's going to be important that you also, that there's a strategy for soliciting ideas. And maybe it's just a piece on the website, you know? Because lots of times there's things, so for instance, if you went to the summer concert at Winnicott Park last night. You saw Winnicott School fifth grader sing a solo with the orchestra that evening in front of close to five hundred people. And he, he, his parents actually bought that at the Winnicott School trivia fundraiser for Winnicott School. Again.
It was also, it's also an area where you see our alums coming back and performing in the concert, which is another cool thing.
Absolutely, absolutely. And again, that's all on videotape right now as we speak, including Ethan doing the solo. So again, sometimes those opportunities are there, you just may not be aware of.
Yeah, well, and it's, it's again, it goes back to the capacity and the staff and who's going to pull out those parts? Who's going to edit that? Who's going to take out? Because there, yeah, it is taped, but getting it from there to the web, you know, that's, that's what we're, we're happy to talk about.
But in terms of the writing, I think often shorter is briefer. So I don't think you need long pages of explanation. But, you know, look at the newspaper, the stories that have two or three lines under a picture. Tell, tell it quicker, better and easier than, than somebody who writes the whole, writes the whole page and so forth. I'd like to, I think it's easy to do the athletics and the music and that sort of thing. And, but I, I'd like, you could tell, you could tell the story of teachers in the professional development they undergo during their career. And that may not, that may not get the football fan, but it may tell you about the kind of investment that they make and well as the district makes. And, and their preparation over their many years of their career.
And maybe including, again, the other thing I would include on that is an MG grad telling their story about the difference that it made in what they're doing today. You know, a position saving lives. I mean, these are all stories. A woman who's going to be a chemical engineer because she had a biology, chemistry and physics curriculum. So maybe on a timing scheduling basis, you add that piece. Because then the kids have a better idea of what they can do and accomplish while they're here.
So I know you guys laughed with me about this before, but we have so much talent in our district. Haven't we thought about allowing some kids and teachers to write too? I mean, did we, did we approach Mr. Reniek about writing about her music program before we paid somebody else to write about her music program? I would think that teachers have a lot to say. I mean, they're proud of their accomplishments they have. I mean, who knows better about it than her, right? I mean, she can tell us everything that everybody doesn't even know. But, I mean, then we have probably, there's probably some incredibly talented seniors that could do human interest stories on teachers in the building and, I mean, stuff like that.
And that, as I mentioned, we have a lot of district with talent. The problem, the challenge we have is building that capacity to, okay, who's going to go ask her to write this story? Who's going to coordinate it? Make sure that it's written, it's edited and gets onto the website? We don't have anyone to do that right now.
But if we had somebody that could find a freelance writer and pay her, then we have somebody who can, how Mr. Reniek can say, hey, we're going to, we're going to open our, debut our website with a story about the music program. Can he give me a four hundred word story in the next two weeks?
That may be. And that's, but that does go to capacity. It is an additional couple hour task for her to do.
For her to do.
And she has to find the time to do it. And I'm just saying, I, I think that I don't want to negate the fact that all of these great ideas that I've heard coming out around this table. Take someone to coordinate it, someone to be monitoring, someone that you, they had to come up with the ideas of the four areas to write stories about for the webpage to start off with. Okay, and so Doreen went with Andrew to do that. And then I'm sure they talked to Mrs. Reniek to get ideas for what to say, but I'm also sure she appreciated having someone else write it. I mean, you know, so I, I think you're right, but I think you have to be realistic about the capacity of our staff to do work above and beyond what they're already doing. And there's a limit to how much we can keep asking people to do. So I think that's.
Yeah, I don't want her to write monthly, but yearly one is, you know, I think it's part of.
That's actually my primary question, particularly when you look at this timeline grid. And I look at the items that are with that. I look at the website.
Before you start, I would like to get to that.
Well, I know, but I. The only thing I didn't get through yet was the evaluation.
Can we just finish this up for us? And then I don't know how you want to deal with timelines. I'd rather have him deal with it and then ask questions. Thanks.
All right, and the last item is.
Sounds sweet every time. I think I borrowed one.
The things that we're, that we want to do as part of the plan, we certainly want to make sure we evaluate, you know, have we done them and how well have we done them? And so we, we came up with seven different, and not necessarily specific metrics, but ideas that, you know, how we're going to measure some of these things. And so number one, looking at surveys, pre and post surveys, parents and staff with regard to satisfaction. Secondly, again, the community apparent awareness, you know, based on surveys. Third is monitoring our news, e-newsletters. How many people is it getting, you know, are opening when we're sending them? That's something we have, can get very specific data on. Likewise, the social media rates, how many people do we have for followers and so on, data that we can track. Looking at the, you know, processes, how many processes do we have in place? And, you know, we talked about, here's what we want to do for a goal. Have we actually done them and are we following through? Number six, again, the additional communication venues. Have we established them as we're proposing? And then lastly, special communication plans that, again, as we, have we adapted as we've gone along? So I don't.
So there's really two parts to evaluating a plan. One is progress and one is quality. So are you hitting your stated, you know, tactics? Are you getting done what you said you were going to do? That's one thing. And then are they hitting the mark when you're doing? Are you measuring how impactful they are? So we have built both types in here. One, are we making progress on the plan as we lay it out? And are we hitting our purpose as we lay it out? And so measures are designed to do that.
So at the end of the plan, it's not on the PowerPoint, is the timeline. And the very specifics about the, all the tactics that were developed in the plan, the timeline, who is going to do them? And how are we going to, you know, check the progress on that? So one of the things I guess I'll state, and we're going to talk about this in a future meeting, is how are we going to build that capacity? And one of the key things that Doreen and her staff are doing right now is besides doing some of the actual work themselves, like writing and doing this. But also trying to build the capacity within our staff. And I'll use Joyce's example, that, okay, the initial training on how to do the Facebook, okay, that's hers now. And, and she's got it. She has, we have the capacity to do that without outside support, you know, other than, you know, developing that sustainability. So we want to develop that capacity, as you mentioned, within our staff. What we have to evaluate is how much can we build within the staff and how much can't we do it? And, you know, where is that line? So looking ahead, that we'll look later at a proposal about some additional assistance from Doreen and her staff moving forward to continue building that capacity and doing some of that work for us. Ultimately, what we really need to do, not necessarily to implement this, but to where we want to be in the future, we really need a staff person dedicated to this. Not necessarily a full-time person. It could be someone on staff that becomes part of their duties, but we need a person would be the ideal to do this. And so what we're looking at is that transition until we do that, I'm not going to make that proposal for this year. Our staffing is set and, and so we're not looking at adding anything additional, but we need to really think about that in the future about how we might do that. Whether we can incorporate into someone's job duties if we have the right person on staff, whether we need a future hire or how we might combine that. And so later on, when we finish talking about this, we do need to come back then and talk about what are you comfortable with as far as looking at additional support? And what those costs might be and how they will help us, you know, implement this plan. What can we do on our own? What do we need that support on?
Why don't we just increase that minutes like on our Facebook page? The shared burden takes a lot less of it. Like, and I mean, like coaches, if Coach Stassi just threw a couple of pictures of practice with, when you work hard in August, you play in November. Just stupid, you know, things like that on your Facebook page. It takes him a minute, you know? You just.
Yeah, I think, and that's what we're saying right now.
Instead of having to take that picture, send it to Joey. Small, but you know, Joyce, you know, you're doing six steps that don't have to be there. It's one step, he goes right on there, right?
Because we have to monitor.
One person at a time, but I would, I would like to remind people to raise hands too, please, and not just.
People make dumb mistake, we'll just delete it or whatever. It won't be a crazy mistake, I'm sure. But, you know, I mean, maybe a misspelling or, you know, that's, but I mean, that's kind of what social media is. We're not, you know, there's no return on investment here. We're not, you know, it's nice for people that are coming here. It's cool for the district. It's nice to know what's going on, but it's, it's not bringing anything in, but, you know, but it's a nice thing to have. As we, as they get going, they'll do it more. And some coaches might do fifty pictures throughout the season and some coaches might do one the first day and never touch it again. And it, it just evolves and that's kind of what Facebook, that's kind of what the social media does. It evolves, it's all free and we need to make it free.
Well, but I guess what my answer would be, we don't want fifty football pictures and one volleyball picture. We need to monitor, we want to have equal access and make sure that we have, tell our entire story of the district. And I'll tell you from my prior experience, that is exactly what we did. We didn't contract with, you know, Doreen and her staff when we set up our initial Facebook. We made all of our administrators, our principals, administrators on the Facebook spent a lot of time talking about what's appropriate and what's not. And these are, you know, highly trained professional people and there were things I had to remove. That they used poor judgment in what we wanted to post on there. And to give that access to a wide staff, I'll guarantee you, there's going to be a lot of things that need to be taken down that just aren't what we want to post on there. So it is about, it's about what do we want to have? And, and so I guess I wouldn't say that we can just open it up like that.
Then Susan and then Jessica.
By law, we can't do that. It's a nice idea and that's great and that's why they have social media set up the way it is. But that's exactly why they have serious problems and violations of social media. And as a public school, we can't afford that liability. So what it says is to publish a student's picture, we have to have parental permission. So if Mike Stassi puts up fifty kids' pictures and there's two that for very serious family reasons, which may endanger the child, they've opted out. We violated and endangered a child. So there are very, very strong reasons for having to monitor that above and beyond just good sense.
Well, I, I agree with what Susan just said, but also to add on that too, just in a different vein, is that I think it's helpful for me to look at this as, it's not just social media. And yes, I think that what you said is really true, Jeff, that, you know, there's no return on the investment. However, you need to look at this as an opportunity for branding. And to brand anything, you need to have control over the product that you're branding. And that what our product is, is our great school district and we can't just put that out as a brand and have everyone decide what that means. So that, to me, that's, it's helpful for me to frame that in my mind when I'm thinking about, oh yeah, you know, geez, Facebook, it takes you two seconds, you know, for that. But I think there's a need for our purpose. I mean, if we were just individuals putting up our own Facebook page, that's fine.
I think that goes to, the other comment I want to make, but just to piggyback on that is, I don't think it's okay to put things up there with misspellings, fragment, sentence fragments, poor grammar. I don't think that's okay. I think that's okay on your personal Facebook page, not okay on a school district Facebook page. So I would, I think that's just another reason why we have to have somebody looking at all of it. And it's got to be well.
I would agree with that, but I'm just saying there'll be autocorrects that might have to go back and be edited, is what I'm saying. I mean, that's, it happens, it happens.
I guess I don't want to belabor the point. I think you've heard.
But I would say in terms of branding, I agree a hundred percent. I've been in marketing my whole life. But when we hired Coach Stassi to be our coach, he's our brand. I mean, he, that's, he, he walks on that field. He is our brand. He represents Manona Grove School District every Friday night. Every coach does, so. But yeah, I mean, because I don't know the other coaches. If I knew the other coach's name, Coach Zwieffel, there you go. But, but I mean, so I, I trust them to teach my kids. I trust them to throw a picture on Facebook.
Okay, so you're entitled to your point. I think you've just, you've heard some different viewpoints definitely, so we can move on.
So the timeline is here, so I think that would be appropriate. Any questions or comments regard to any pieces on here that you'd like to discuss?
So Dan, I, I do have a list of questions, but I think the, and I think you've spoken to it. But again, I, I, I think this is exactly kind of the way we've been trying to go and the things we've been trying to do. But again, I'm, I'd like to hear your input on kind of your anticipated staffing, particularly for the top projects. Particularly for if the website is really coming up in two weeks. Again, just simple things like training, training for the board for being able to use it and how we, we can help other people. But to start with, you know, how are you going to staff this? And the second thing is, at least for a year, one of the columns we need to add here is anticipated cost. So if there is staffing and it's in addition.
Right.
I think we should be able to see the costs so we can justify that as we proceed.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's what I, I guess my thought was tonight to just talk about what we, you know, like and need to do and then come back with that.
But how can, okay, so for instance, if we're going to put up the website in two weeks. Who is going to do exactly what we just talked about and keep it updated? Make sure it's being used, do the training for staff as the new website comes into place? Again, if that comes up in two weeks, I can list ten things that would need to be done within, before that or during the two weeks after. What's your thought?
Well, right now, the website, we are working very closely with Doreen and her staff. And, and so when it becomes live, we've, it's up to the, you know, the principals and their staff to maintain their school sites as well. And then we have our district staff there. But one of the things I would like to do is continue to have Doreen's staff do that initial monitoring as we're, again, we're talking, as we complete that training and making sure things are up to date. Eventually, I expect that's something we do a hundred percent ourselves internally is maintaining it.
Could you do a flow, just your thought about kind of how you transition that and the staff that you're going to transition that to? And the cost, at least for a year, that you anticipate in getting that support piece? That'd be great.
Yeah, and actually, Doreen has already put together a draft of that. And so that's what we'll come back with, exactly that.
Super. And then again, I just had some other questions about, again, plan for, plans for training. And then, again, I just had some other questions about, again, plan for, plans for training, let's just say, for example, training the board on the new website, 15 minutes, maybe, I don't know what it would take, but putting it up, showing us how it works, showing us how to get to the things we need to be able to find, board docs, policies, procedures, things like that.
My thought is, if we've done our job well, you can go to the district page and you'll find everything you need.
That's what I was gonna say, I hope you don't need training, because that would be the mark of a good website, when you wouldn't need training, I think.
Okay, I'm personally gonna charge.
Yeah.
If it takes me more than five.
And you're right, that is, one of the major issues with the current site, is try to find, try to find.
It is, I think it is, and that's one of the things we're hoping to fix with this website, so.
Well, yeah, and one of the features is, when you hover, it drops down and shows up right away, so you shouldn't have to look too far, you should be able to see what you're looking for from the top page.
So, I'm gonna find the handbook, I'm gonna find policies, I'm gonna find board docs, I'm gonna find board information, supervisor, contact staff directory.
Yep.
That, absolutely, is a goal.
I mean, you can find that now, but you have to work at it.
Eric, did you get it? It's not even that difficult.
It's not that hard now.
Okay, I'll take it.
Yeah, exactly, it's not a showstopper.
No, that's right.
But, and that's, and that's the point about, you know, with all the schools, having consistency, that, okay, here's your template, here are the things that are on every school page, and once it's there, now it's just maintain up-to-date information, you know, that when you have your, you know, 14, 15 information that gets on there.
And I also think we should be open to feedback, as Susan has indicated, I mean, I, I don't pretend to be perfect. I don't pretend to think that everyone I work with is perfect, as we'll do as perfect a job as we can with the input that we've been given and the many minds that have worked on it, but, gosh darn it, we missed that, or, don't you know, we should've done that? And that's, you know, as you mentioned, the two weeks before, the two weeks after, probably a month after. I know a school district that I've worked with in May, and, you know, it's July, we've headed up for a couple months, and let's sit down and look up, no, it's August, gosh, sorry, let's look at it, see what's working, what's not. We opened a little, got feedback on our website, here's a little email address, send us, send us your comments, mostly have been positive, one or two things we heard, we fixed. I mean, I think that's a reasonable expectation of anything new that you launch, especially something like that. So, I'm totally open to, you know, collecting that feedback, taking a good look at it again, and if we have to change something, we'll do it, if it makes good sense. And I respect the idea that training is very important. It's, it's key from a technical viewpoint for our staff to feel comfortable using the tools that are in the product. I don't train on the product, we have CMS for Schools includes training for your system administrator and your trained trainer, so that's part of the contract. And we will happily work with anybody who needs, there's a support desk, so, you know, the people who are using that can, like, say, Joyce is an administrator, they can say, Joyce, I need training on X. We have videos, we have webinars, you know, there's lots of ways that, if people access them and make themselves available to that information, we can provide it.
So, I guess what I'm looking for is to make sure we have a plan for that, rather than just answer, kind of answer, that there's a plan in place.
Again, I'm looking at a one-year plan that will show us, you know, what we're gonna need to do. Again, this, this is a nice thought, but it's not the specific.
Can I just ask for clarification, so are you saying you would like all that information that, that Doreen just spelled out about who's going to be trained by, you wanna see that?
Not necessarily, for instance, what would be an example of training, you just gave one, but, kind of, as she was walking through that, training will be needed for X, Y, and Z, staff training will be needed for X, Y, and Z, we plan to implement that within this period of time, and that's gonna be done by blank, and that will cost so much, because we're gonna use that. That's all. I'm looking, because we have to be accountable for the costs, and until we start being accountable for the time involved and who's gonna do it, then it's difficult to be accountable for that. And, I mean, truthfully, I was not aware until you sent us the email that we had spent an additional $5,000 on the website, understanding why, I totally get that. We just weren't aware of that until after it happened, and what I'm looking for is the ability to kind of look at that and be able to respond to that in a board governance position, and be aware of it, rather than to be surprised by it. I just think that'll be helpful for all of us to be able to do that. And I think, as you look at these items, you know, you'll be able to pull out which of those are gonna need training, and it doesn't, I don't care who, it just said, we'll need training. 10 people will be performed by CISA, whatever, and will cost $5,000, rather than, how much does this cost plus? Okay, just, just a thought.
Yeah, and I think, you know, you, on the first page of the timeline on the website, there's three key pieces after the launch. Okay, develop content strategy, like we talked about, the four stories that we have, okay, we have them to start with, or update the, the second ones, update feature stories. And so, how are we gonna do that, that's to be determined. Will it be our staff that writes them? It might very well be, and, and that's something that we need to, you know, look at, but with the key is, we've got it good for the first couple of months, I mean, we, we've had a strategy of how long it will stay on there, but we need to, now the next step is, okay, how are we gonna keep this going? We're absolutely committed to doing it, and.
So, if we keep CISA to do the training for another six months, what is, what is the anticipated cost of that?
And that will be in what you're gonna get.
Perfect.
That's what he's been talking about.
That's great, that's great, that's great. And, and I think that's exactly what I was asking. And then, under research and key messaging, there was, in an earlier section, there was something about continuing workshops with the board, so it would be helpful if we had some kind of structure for that, and, you know, if you wanna do that quarterly, when do we wanna do that, what are the key messages? And then, again, the social presence piece, who is the staff assigned for monitoring that work? And then, under photography, again, says there's a photographer, okay, who's that gonna be, where's that cost gonna come from, how's that gonna be assigned? And then, again, I had the question about direct staff input to the website. The community newsletter, on March 19th, the board directive was that we were waiting for more information about a community newsletter, a plan and a cost, and I don't have that, so I don't know that we've actually said, understanding that we already kind of have one when we do the annual report, and maybe that's what that's gonna be, it would be helpful to just have a little more structure about what your thought is on that, and if you're gonna use CISA, what the cost would be on that. Because the board directive at that meeting, if you look at the minutes, was, we will get additional information. It's right here.
Well, right, but if you're looking at the timeline, it says September that we'd be continuing to review it in December. I mean, that, that is, again, going to be part of this, and I think it's, I think the last time we met, and it was not those minutes, it was later, we did kind of agree we'd like to try an external newsletter tied in with the annual meeting, because we thought that would be a good time. And I think now that we're in August, and we haven't done what you just said, we're talking more about what Dan said earlier, which is a little bit of a scaled-back version of that not being mailed out. But I think all these things you're bringing up are, you're gonna see them in this proposal.
I think you're exactly right.
And when you look at the timelines here, you can kind of see that, the board, conducting board workshops, that was the one that we did in January that was completed, and then we may, we may need other ones as that comes up, but that's not necessarily.
But again, a key point is researching key messaging. And it alluded to board workshops related specifically to that on, so I just thought, put that on the schedule, if that's gonna be somewhere.
Right next to that here, it says January completed, so anyway, I'm just, I don't wanna be nitpicky about it, I'm just saying, I think all of this is gonna be part of when Dan brings you the, kind of proposal to continue into the year, I think a lot of these kinds of questions will be answered.
The implementation piece, I think that'll be helpful too. And then, again, the internet site, the staffing on that, the, the e-newsletters, maybe just explaining a little bit more about how they're different from what we currently do, but I think I kind of got that from Doreen. And then, the other thing is building a district profile, I think there needs to be board involvement and, and input on what that should look like. One of the words we use in this communication piece is reputation, and I'm not sure that's the right word, I think profile is a better one, you know, what we wanna do is be able to represent who we are and where we wanna go. And I just think there's better words than, than reputation for that. And I think using good evaluative tools is an excellent idea. But I think the district profile, to me, is a, an extremely high priority, and we pro, that should've been maybe addressed first, because how do you build a website if you haven't built your profile, and how you wanna look, and what's important to say? And maybe you can build that off the information that's already been solicited, but I think as board governance, we wanna see how that's coming together. Make sense?
Yeah, and I would say, though, that was a key piece to the initial discussions we've had back, even prior to Doreen coming on board, you know, and the workshop you've done, and then the workshop that she did, and it's more, it's not just at the workshop, but in the early part where it talks about, you know, some of the strategy piece, that is all incorporated, that was the one thing, and if you remember the draft that you saw back in, in January, that was the background information of trying to gather, and Doreen learning about our district, what is the district about, what are the key things? So, I agree, it's an ongoing process, but I think we've tried very hard to take the input that we've gotten thus far to build that.
Okay, so, would you give us an update on what you have in terms of the information that you've accumulated in relation to building the district profile? Because I think it's helpful for us in making the final decision about how that evolves to have input on that.
And I, just, I was looking for this in the plan, and that's kind of the whole, you know, broad summary would be on pages five and six, where we talk about the strengths and challenges of the district, a lot of that information came directly, you know, from the board.
Yeah, that was a little strange, too, because it looked like it included. I think ultimately, when I think of a district profile, I know that, I think, Doreen, you've done some work with the foundation on, and at least getting them connected with it, with, they're putting out a new kind of brochure, and I know that's something we also talked about in connection with the profile, of developing something that could be in realtors' offices and that sort of piece down the road, so I don't know if that's kind of what you're getting at, Susan, that's a, it's another project, but it kind of goes along with these other things, so. Okay, anything else, anyone else have any questions, comments? All right, well, looks good, so the next steps will be?
We'll bring back some cost proposals and, you know, some of the follow-up we've talked about, and how, specifically, what we will look at and do internally, what we believe we need support on, and, and there's a couple ways, and we'll present that a couple different ways as well, as to, it can kind of be a per-item type thing for certain things, or we could actually do a contract, but you'll have all that information before we, you know, look at any type of thing for a board approval that we'll discuss, so we can come back then, you know, with the follow-up of that.
Okay. Thank you. Then, the next item on the agenda is the report by the high school athletic director, we have Jeff Schreiner here with the year-end activities report.
Athletics, which is exactly my question, are we gonna get a year-end activities report?
Well, it's on the, yeah, I understand that, it's on the agenda as activities, the report itself, it does focus on athletics, so, well, you're gonna, that's a question you can ask when Jeff finishes.
All right, thank you.
Ready? Okay, just to recap on our athletic side of things, from the 2013-14 school year, I'll just kind of scroll down the pages as we go through. The first page just kind of starts off and frames our, our Badger Conference, both the North and the South. As you can see on the South side, which we participate in, our participation numbers, our enrollment numbers went up, five students, we fit real nice in the Badger South Conference, and we got Oregon and Stilton with the, the larger the schools in the conference, but we fit pretty comfortably with the middle of the pack there as well. On the North side of things, you can see where some of the schools are starting to outpace some of the other ones, and the other ones are starting to lose some of their enrollment. Sport offerings, if you take a look at that, pretty, pretty balanced. Last year, we had 21 sports running on the South side, we were towards the top with that, and on the North side, we were offering a lot of those sports, up around the 21 to 23 there. Second page, as we go through, are our celebrations, obviously, we started the fall season with a, a great.
Is it my eyes, or is that in focus?
It is the print, even when you look on the computer, the print on that football voice so and I, and then you say.
It's fancy five.
You didn't capitalize football, but you capitalized that.
Well, you know, and as I was sitting back there, listening to the conversation before this, I'm, my edits through here, and it's kind of one, it'll get cleaned up before it gets posted on our webpage. So, I, I've already cleaned my copy up. Anything I can do, though, Dean, to help it focus it in better?
No.
If you have an iPad, you can.
The way it jumps to the fun and the title, it's like, you know what, it's really fine.
It's fine, it's very clear here, it's just.
It's satisfactory. Don't go to fine.
Takes me back to the school days.
Well, you're looking at your iPad.
I'm looking at hard copy, that's better than anything you've got.
Oh, okay, well, except for my iPad, I can hard it that long.
Going into our celebrations, obviously, we started our fall season with a state championship in our football, and, and that took our, our school district for quite a ride, which pretty much lasted until the winter break. Our kids were fired up throughout pretty much the beginning of the school year, winter break, we got a little break from school, and it seemed like we settled in a little bit more to the winter sports when we came back. So, that was an amazing season, undefeated season, 14-0 with the state championship. You know, I highlight that still, the sports editor listed as the most memorable sports piece of the, of the, of the year, was the second half of the state championship game, so it was good for our district and stuff. Boys swim and dive, we had freshman swimmer, or freshman diver that came, Henry, came in, Henry Carmen, took second place at the state tournament as a ninth grader, and he still continues to keep pace as far as the, the talent in the state of Wisconsin, as far as diving for us. Boys, the boys swim side of it, we had Andrew Sackett, who's attending UW-Green Bay this fall for school, and then will also be swimming for them, was a state champion in the 200 free, and then we had a runner-up in the 400 relay with Lars Dahl, Alex Kimmel, Eric Dahl, and, and Andrew Sackett. Girls track and field team put forward their best effort at the state track meet this year. We have junior Gabby Bové, who's continuing to put marks up that are being recognized outside the state of Wisconsin and stuff, and she's setting herself up real nice for her senior year. Our conference championships, football, boys hockey, girls basketball, boys swim, and girls track and field. Girls track and field as a team were not conference champs, but those individuals on there were conference champions at their meet. Regional champions, our girls basketball team was a regional champ, had a good run with a lot of veteran players on there, and then ran into a good team from DeForest in the sectional championship game, which ended that for them, but then our girls track, again, you can see where Gabby Bové in the 100, 200, and long jump, and then Autumn Ogden as a sophomore with the 100 meter hurdles. And the sectional champs, our boys swim again, pretty solid with some of those swimmers, the only senior that we, our two, we had two seniors on the team, Andrew Sackett, and the other ones are pretty much all returning, and they have a good promise as far as coming back this year in the pool, and should be a contender for the state title again. Girls track and field, you can see the ones that went on to be a sectional champ, and there are state qualifiers, cross-country, we have Terry McMillan, who's gonna be, he's actually a junior that last year, will be a senior this year, he's, he's been right there each year, cross-country, but he also leads a pack of kids that have now, in our cross-country, have kind of turned the corner, and we have a pack that have been running together. They, when, we had a couple of kids out running all the time, and what they usually do is see or run by or hide from the LaFollette pack that's been running around Monona all the time, but now we have a group of kids that like to challenge them or run by them, let them know that Monona Grove has got a bigger group of kids running now. This summer, you could go up by the track, and you'd see them out there on their own running and stuff, so it's pretty cool to see those guys coming together, where they started a few years back, where it was pretty sparse to find some kids like that, they've now found a good group of senior leaders to kind of lead that group. Girls swim, pretty solid in our, in our turnout there for state qualifiers, we have a good core of girls. We have a good core of girls swimmers coming back again this year to lead that group. Our boys swim again, pretty solid performance at the state level and again are going to return a good core of kids. Boys track and field had a rebuilding year or reloading year, but they did get two individuals to the state track meet. And our girls track, again, you can see the girls that made it to their state track meet. As we get into the accolades, these are, are voted upon by the conference coaches. The bold print are the ones that are unanimous selections. Here again, you see Terry McMillan in cross-country. He's one of our first boys cross-country kids to make it to state since my time here and he continues to make it each year. Or you look at our football core of kids, they're all, you know, you look at it and there are a lot of unanimous decisions on there. And to sit in that meeting and hear these coaches vote for our kids like that is pretty impressive too because it's, it's unanimous and stuff and it's like, that's a, that's an easy sport banquet to go to because we're getting a lot of recognition for our kids and stuff, which is, which is real positive. We go down, we have boys soccer, boys soccer is still reloading. I remember with Sam Lamarche when he came in as a freshman, he was a varsity player. And it's just, it's one where sometimes when you have a core, a good, strong football program, your soccer team is, is always reloading as well too. But this year they, they have a team that's coming together and kind of rebuilding around that, so they're, they're looking to do better this year. Our volleyball program, pretty strong showing in the conference as well too with those kids getting recognized. Going into the winter season, our boys basketball team, we had a good core of kids coming through there to get their recognition. Girls basketball, we had a veteran staff of girls that have been with us for the last four years, kind of lead it and stuff. And they've, were respected as conference recognition as well. Sam Kinsler in our girls hockey was an honorable mention. And then our boys hockey program as conference champs put forward some kids for the conference recognition as well. Spring sports, it's an interesting spring with weather, but it was also one where we got some kids recognized as well. Our girls soccer program, a real strong showing there as far as those kids getting recognized. And then our softball program really sparked up this year and starting to get some recognition. As you look through that, the conference recognitions though too, look at the grades on some of those kids and it's, we got some good depth there. We're getting some seniors that are getting their due recognition, but we do have some younger student athletes that are also getting some good recognition. And, and look to set pace or lead our programs going forward. Significant accomplishments, here's a page where, what are our kids, what are they getting, the bigger accomplishment, where are they, what are they getting recognized and where are they headed to? You can see our kids that have signed letter of intents to take athletics to the next level. We're representing football, boys swim, boys basketball, girls basketball, girls soccer, girls golf. Michaela Houck as a sophomore, she's now coming on the scene as far as a premier golfer in the, in the Madison area. Caitlin Long with girls track, Gabby Bové, boys hockey. Coaching recognition, Mike Stassi with football. Out of all those that are put on there, he enjoyed the last one the most, to ride in the, the yellow convertible down Monona Drive was a highlight for him. Had his mom with him and stuff, so I don't know if he ever promised her a ride in there, but he got her one. So that was fun for him. Dave Kinsler, Bob Johnson Memorial, Section Six Coach of the Year, that's not the first time Dave has received that, so that was a good recognition for him. Years of service, sign of getting older and for myself, but also Dan's weefle with 20 years in. Dan also listed his number of wins, but I told him it's not the number of wins that count, it's the experience that gets recognized and stuff. But Dan's been around for 20 years and has done a nice job with our boys basketball program. The next page is our academic page and, and looking at this, as we go through the year-end report, it's kind of one where, you know, you take a look at the kids that don't get some of the conference recognition or get some of the significant accomplishments and stuff. But the academic accomplishments is where all of our kids have a play into this. And if you take a look at our overall GPA of a 3.6, or 3.3, they continue to perform in the classroom. We have our, our girls cross-country team was the winner of the GPA award, they finished with a 3.8, the highest of all of the, the grades in there. Different this year than the years previous reports, I decided to break out so you could see the participation numbers at all levels. And you can take a look at what we had last year, that I put in parentheses, what we had last year compared to this year. On the, so in the fall sports, last year we had 351 kids and this year we had 344. So a little drop there and you can see where we picked it up in the other sports. But I thought that was important to see where we have some of our freshmen and you can see the pockets of kids where they go through their transitions. If they're in as a freshman, they might change a sport or they might decide not to continue on. But again, GPA wise, we have our kids that are excelling in the classroom. And it brings up a point with our coaches as far as, as we talk, you know, how do we recognize this a little bit more? And one of the thoughts we were thinking on doing is having a three-point-o club, giving kids a chance to recognize that and, and maybe a, some kind of signage in the school. So each one of the sports would have a three-point-o club and if you're a three-point-o or above, you get your name listed on that board and stuff. And just something that kids can shoot for to get in there, because there's not a whole lot of them on the list that are not making that. So we're thinking of ideas, our ways to better highlight some of the academic success for our kids that way. On the, on the overall, the bottom total numbers, we have 23 programs. We count dance as a fall sport and then also a winter sport, so we count them as two. Levels of play, we're at 49 and we had 784 students participating this year with an overall GPA of a 3.36, so. Our senior awards, senior awards are one where it's interesting, you know, and giving out these senior awards over the years. Here again, we have a few, we could dominate that night senior rec with a lot of athletic awards, but we identify awards that we give to our kids. And, you know, it, it captures a lot, but yet there's also kids in that room where there's a lot of hard work that goes into it that don't get that handshake or get that recognition and stuff. And you feel for those kids as you look at them and see them and they're sitting there like going, yeah, but what, what about me? So it's kind of one of those where it's, it's a bittersweet night, but also we, the kids that we are recognizing are incredible and they're, and these awards are given by our coaches. We'll sit at a meeting and they'll, they'll wrestle with some thoughts and wrestle with rationale as far as who's getting these awards and stuff. So the kids that we put forward are very deserving of the awards, but there's also kids in the room too that put a lot of hard work and effort in. Perseverance to get to, they don't get recognition in the end, that I feel, we got to look at something on that end. The three-sport athlete award is an, is an award that we, we thought was maybe an award of the past and maybe it doesn't fit the criteria of today's student athlete. And yet we continue to see a large number of kids still attaining those. And actually, I was just registering, a, a parent came in today and I was registering her son for athletics this fall. And she told me that she, and he's going to be a senior and she mentioned that and he's excited about getting that 12-sport season, three-sport athlete award. And he's a kid that would, once he stands on the stage in the spring to get that award, he'll probably have a lot of his classmates looking at him and saying, really? You know, they, they forgot that he was participating in the sport each season and stuff. And so that's the beauty of that award where sometimes those kids at the end of their, their career, they look at and their classmates would have never thought that they were a three-sport athlete. But it allows them a chance to be recognized in that. The other thing that pops out to me in the three-sport athlete award is we have some students that, you'll see four sports behind their names. They, they met the challenge where maybe they, that was, that sport might have been fading on them, but they rerouted and got themselves involved in another sport rather than just stepping out of that sport season and not doing anything else there. And so I think that's, that kind of says something about that kid and again, the perseverance to stay in sports and, and stay involved and stuff is pretty, pretty neat. Our WI Scholar Athletes, I was, I was really amazed, I thought we were really going to get some state recognition. We had local, those were the students that represented our school at the local level, but they didn't get the state recognition of the WI Scholar Athlete. But we put forward two 4.0 students and both kids had participated in more than just one sport season. So it tells you how strong the competition is out there, but some really high-performing student athletes for us as well. Badger Conference Athletic Award, here again, two, two good candidates for that, that are very deserving of that award. Varsity Club is an award of, award of character. And again, to, one of the nice things about my job is I get to sit in the, in the classroom and listen to the coaches talk about rationale and some of these kids and then give the award to the, to the student athlete. And those two students that deserve that, or that receive that award, pretty soft-spoken kids, hard workers and just go out and they lead by example and stuff, so that's a fun part of it. Athlete of the Year Award, we started, I want to say 2008. Again, defines maybe not the WI Scholar or the, the impact person that's out there, but it's the overall athlete that they feel is the best going forward for their class. We have two students as male student athletes that got that award, that tells you the coaches just can't sort those two out and decide to split that award for them. Our Silver Eagle Award, which is our highest award given, again Tyler Blang and Danielle Harrison, Taylor Nelson, over the last four years have just been the ideal candidate for that, is leading by example, but also in everything they do, character and stuff. From the athletic training room, we saw things where we, we had an independent contractor-type trainer in Anne Hockett and we switched over to be contracted by the UW Health Services, which was a move for us that has allowed us a couple of different things. It's allowed us to have Anne involved in some outreach programs that are going on and keeping her on the cutting edge when we're, like in the summertime. So she'll do some clinicals, but it also has provided an outreach for student trainers that are in college to also come out and they're in the trench as a student trainer in our programs and stuff. So that helps out to put them in the, in the training room in and around our athletes, but it also helps Anne kind of bring some things up to the, to the cutting edge forefront for us. We also had two students that expressed some interest in being athletic trainers at the next level. And so we had one of those each semester and they spent time with Anne and also this student that was training with Anne. We continue to do our impact baseline testing for concussions. It provides us not only with a, a benchmark for a start for parents if their students are, have a concussion, but it also gives us good conversation with parents. And the, you know, the conversations continue to be open and forward and not challenged by parents trying to get around the, the baseline test or the concussion piece that comes in. So I feel that that's in a good place. We, we make it mandatory to, to baseline test contact sports and stuff, but we do not deny or turn away any students that, or parents that wish for their kids to be tested. We gave 216 baseline tests last year. Those tests, they say, are good for two years, so we kind of rotate them through like a, a sports physical as well. But again, if a parent wants to, calls and says we'd like to have our student, our, our son or daughter baseline tested again, we're not going to tell them that we don't have enough test slots for that. Focus in our training room, this past year, we looked at our emergency action plans. We have a lot of sports different in the fall and the spring that'll be out in parks, are out in areas that don't have a facility to, you know, you have to plan it out, they might not have a facility that is an easy go-to place in case bad weather comes in. And talking with our athletic trainer, we just felt that how, although we have our coaches review that with our student athletes, how well are they doing that? So what we've done is we, we've cleaned up and put it back together as far as our emergency action plans with the actual Google map on there. So if there's sending a, a person to go call 911 or if they're calling them themselves, they have accurate information inside streets and everything like that that they can make that plan more efficient. We've also taken it a step further that we use at the beginning of the year and we're just about, we have volleyball and cross-country to start this fall yet. But what we'll do then is after they get started is Anne and myself will go around to all the sports and all the levels and we'll do a quick little talk about the emergency action plans to make sure the students are aware of it. It's a little backup for our coaches and also it connects the students to know who Anne is and also to take away that they, that they, sometimes if we have a sport that's practicing out in the field or Cottage Grove and Anne's at the high school, they always feel like they, they might have an injury and they got to rush off to practice. We're telling them, we're introducing them to Anne and saying, don't do that, stop in and see her, you're not going to be penalized by a coach or anything like that. And then we also tell them too that it's important, they know the action plan, because as the coach, if the coach is the only, only one at the site and the emergency isn't around the coach, the kids need to know the plan that they can activate to maybe help out the adult at the scene too. But we found those meetings to be real positive. Kids are attentive through that and stuff, but it's also a good connector, I, I believe, for Anne as well. And the kids feel a little more comfortable knowing that they can go see, see Anne. Not that there was a problem before, but it just feels a little more comfortable for incoming freshmen or maybe a kid starting a sport that they know where she's located and know that she's on site for that. We also had our students in the fall participate in the football helmet study. The part of the study, and I, I apologize for the next page, but that was the document they sent me. It's, that's a terrible document to post because you can't really read that, but that's a PDF and to try to copy it a couple of times, it starts to break apart. But the purpose of this study, the helmet study, was to take a look at, we have parents, the three helmets that are listed there. I remember when I was first getting started in here, Shet was the helmet to go with. And then Rydell came out with the Revolution and the Badgers was wearing that, so it was like that was the helmet to go with. And then all of a sudden you had some of the professional athletes getting concussions and they came out with the Zenith helmet. The cost ranges in all of those too, but what the, the helmet study proved for us is that, and not only at our school, but other schools too, is that it doesn't matter the helmet on, they're all, their specifications with concussions and stuff are all up to par. It's the contact that comes, is it head-on or is it off to the side and stuff that's causing the, the impact and stuff. So the, the helmet study is just one where it allowed us to participate in and become a part of high school statistics in term of what's up with the helmets. This fall, what we did is our, at our fall registration meeting, we had the person that conducted the study from UW Health come in and be a side table at, at that meeting if any parents wanted to come up and talk to them about any of this stuff. And it was nice to see that parents were actually going over there, but he can best explain it rather than myself trying to do that. He was on site for us to, to take part and do that stuff. The other study that we participated in was an ankle brace study. Continue to try, try to get kids to understand that they're in motion, they're trying as hard as they can. And to take on an ankle injury, it sets them way back and stuff. So we're, we're looking at an ankle brace study to show them that by purchasing an ankle brace, you're, you're putting yourself in a better position to avoid an ankle injury. Some students will get taped and stuff, so we're going to participate in that ankle study again this year. And the last page, I put this as the last page because it, it is definitely the measuring stick that everybody feels. They always want to know where we finished as a team and that's where we hang our hat on. But I, I try to tell our coaches and everyone I share this report with though, that in the real scope of, of high school sports, it should be like the last page because it, what our kids go through, you know, to prepare for their season and, and the commitment that they put into the season sometimes doesn't deserve the place that they finish. But if you take a look at it, this is the Badger South Conference standings and you take a look at where we, we fare in there. And, and some of our programs, you know, you look at our boys cross-country, that is definitely going to change this year. We got a group that were motivated by that finish last year and they don't want to be in that place coming forward. The other ones though, we're, we're definitely a, a target for the other schools in our conference. When they come to play MG or we go to there to play them, they definitely want to take us down and, and put that feather in their cap. So for us, it's kind of one, you know, MG Sports is still kind of the highlight in the Badger Conference in both the north and the south. And we definitely continue to put ourselves in a place to be proud and, and share the pride that we continue to put forward from our coaches. So that in itself is our year-end report.
Question, I, it's interesting to get that concussion helmet thing. Because right, right after, right, the week before I went this, the MD at UW who conducted this, all this study, he reported to our Rotary Club on concussions in college and high school sports. And I thought that the 30-minute presentation we had was really an eye-opener for protection of, of student athletes of all types. He, his presentation had to do, I don't know if you've heard it, his whole presentation, but, but it had to do with, he put up a statement, is that fact or fiction or is it myth or that sort of thing? And most of the, most of the audience, you know, guessed wrong on things about concussions. Is it, people like that putting on, the half hour I heard, I guess if I were a coach in any of these sports that had possibility of concussion, I guess I would have learned an awful lot about, about the care and educating the parents, that, you know, that sort of thing. Have your, do your coaches, it's not just football or, or soccer, are they all, or hockey? Are they, do they, have they had any kind of formal professional development program? Even the report in that study is, is absolutely revealing.
And that's a, that's a good question. And it's not just our coaches, but the, the National Federation at national level has taken a look at that as well. And they've put together some free programs for coaches. They, they have courses that obviously coaches can take for a fee, but the National Federation's come out with not only concussions, but also acclimatization and nutrition and hydration and stuff. And so those courses, what we did last year is we, we put that out to our coaches to see what their background knowledge is of concussions and we collected that. But that's where we're at this year is to, to push this free course on them and have them go through it, they can print. to push this free course on them and have them go through it. They can print the certificate that they went through that. And it's probably a half hour of their time, but like you said, they're going to probably go into it thinking that they know more than what they do. But as they print that certificate. So that's going to be accountability piece for us, uh, this year on that concussion course.
But the, the, I think the, the question that, uh, was asked, I wish I had asked it. They asked not only about coaches and parents, uh, but they also ask about the attending trainer or medical practitioner. Is there, uh, how, uh, what is their general knowledge? Is it as good as the general public? And it, it wasn't, well, it, it's not what you would expect, uh, that they were not up to date on and that sort of thing. I, I would, you know, I was impressed with it. And in fact, before this picture came up, and he used this exact picture here on the, the quality helmets, I remember you telling me a number of years ago, uh, you asked me, guess how much we paid for a helmet? And I, I guessed way low. I think at that time it was four hundred and seventy-five dollars a helmet. And, uh, and I, I said, I, I said, my athletic director told me that, uh, you gotta buy that helmet to, uh, to deal with the liability issues and to protect, you know, that sort of thing. And, uh, then he went on with, with, with defining the results of it. Is that, uh, I don't, he didn't come to conclusion that no matter what you spend, it doesn't matter. But, uh, the brands that are out there, uh, generally are, are no difference in impact. It's what you said, it's the type of hit and frequency and, and, uh, type and everything. Is, is there any, is there any plans to, uh, make sure that the people responsible for this from, from the, uh, trainer, medical end to the coaches and, and parents, because they claim that often in the high school, it's the parents that push, supporting their kid to get back in the game and that sort of thing.
Right. And that's why I was saying that we, the concussions we had, we're finding that our parents are not challenging us to get their kids back in or getting a doctor's signature to get them back into play. We have a concussion management plan that says that if you su- uh, sustain a concussion or you're concussed, that before you get back to play, here's the steps that you're going to have to, to walk through. But also, and I don't know if it was Tim McGuire that you, that came to speak at the Rotary for you or not, but, Tim was the one who came to our, our school for our fall registration. But as our registration lines were going through, uh, some of the feedback we collected that sometimes the lines are long and it's like to stand in line. You know, a couple of things that, that I like about that is it's one, it's reconnect back for our, our people in our community. And they come in and they, they're coming off a busy summer. They may not have seen each other, so they, they use that time to, to gather and, and, uh, and get back connected and stuff. And so if you step back and look at that, that's happening. But we took it a step further this year and what we did is we had, uh, a chiropractor come in and talk about concussions and also hydration and dehydration. And we, we did the same presentation. It was, he had thirty minutes and we did it twice. And, uh, so the parents, as they registered and they were waiting for the sport meeting to start, they could go in and listen to a, uh, a, a doctor talk about that rather than me standing in front of them and, and talk like I was, I know. Not that I don't know what's going on, but it's, it's one where it was coming from a doctor, a, a medical professional rather than an athletic director. So we continue to try to put things into place, but our focus on that, when I went to find those people is that, again, our parents come and register their kids and, and push them off and then they go through it. And then the next time they touch it or deal with it is when the kid has a concussion. And I just, I, I feel like it's, how much do we give our parents to educate them? What we decided to do is rather than dump a whole pamphlet on them and say, here's a whole bunch about concussions, take it home and don't read it. What we decided to do is on the one page, put down three pictures, what they could maybe post on their fridge. If your kid gets a concussion. And then on the other side was about dehydration and hydration. You know, it's a little too late to hydrate when you're dehydrated. So how do they go about doing that? And I think in our, as a parent myself, you hear about this all the time, but do you really sit down and actually, take the time to read up on it and, and best pu- put your kid forward when they participate in sports? So I, I think, I feel that our, with our athletic trainer, we sat down and we built that little half-hour talk. We pulled some, uh, a PowerPoint presentation with some clips that were right on. We could have spent two hours on, on that, all those topics, but we figured we're just going to make it like a baseline. Quick intro to some parents that are probably coming off of work or hustling through this and, uh, we just want to maybe stall them for a little bit. Put a little information in that they can grasp and then give them a handout that's not overwhelming, that they can take home and maybe pin somewhere if they, if their son or daughter is, uh, faced with a concussion.
Reason I mention that is, is because the, the five M Ds that were in the Rotary audience that heard that, felt that a lot of that was professional development that all, all should have, particularly when they're dealing with that. Because I think they learned something from that research findings themselves.
And I think the WIA does a nice job too, as far as, uh, presenting a, a ton of information for us. What we've done is we've taken our athletic page and, and, and we're rebuilding that as well. We're waiting for the big changeover and then we're going to, uh, rework our page. But, I think it's also important to take and not confuse parents by grabbing language from over here and language from over here and, and kind of throwing it all at them. So what we've done is we've aligned our athletic page to that of the WIA. The information that they're, that they're presenting to us as athletic directors and coaches is then consistent, but we're pushing out to our parents and everybody going to our pages and stuff. So our links link up with theirs. Their links are linking up with the National Federation stuff. So it's kind of all consistent, uh, rather than popped out information that we're getting from different, different sources.
Well, for as it's worth, I'll get you the name of that Rotary speaker. He was, I think he was the person at UW who headed up this study.
Well, and what I'm finding, that'd be a good resource because what I'm finding is those people don't not mind coming to like our parent meetings like that and do a little community outreach. And I don't know how they use it in their own profession for accreditation or whatever like that, but it sure helps us to try to put someone in front that is actually, uh, uh, recognized as a person in that profession and stuff. So.
The impact, uh, program, is that, um, you say we have like two hundred sixteen students participate in that? That's on a voluntary basis, right? Or it wasn't clear if we were recording?
Yeah, it, it's, there, we have mandatory sports like football. All of our kids, that's not a choice to be, uh,
It is mandatory.
It is for, for the majority of our sports, it's mandatory. But there are some sports that, uh, uh, as much as I was, I was going to say girls golf, but we also, we had a girl amazingly hit a ball that had another kid standing right next door in the driving range. That, uh, wasn't sure if she had a concussion or not. So it was easy.
Sounds like one of my T shots.
It says we offer it. It doesn't say it's mandatory. That's, that's what I think.
Some sports are mandatory. If they're, uh, uh, obviously hockey and, and, well, our basketball programs, hockey and, uh, football are all mandatory. They're not. Soccer is as well. Yeah.
And so, and then we, then we are using it as a follow-up. And that is also a requirement if there's a concussion, then we use it as part of our, our return to your procedure for returning to, to, to play.
Right.
Right? To follow up with the, with the test of a concussion.
And there's, I mean, there's still some language that goes on about the, the impact testing, uh, results and everything like that as well too. But we still use it as a, a baseline tool that, uh, we give our parents that if, as you go in to see your healthcare provider, at least you have something. Because we find more and more that, uh, the students that we send forward to see the healthcare provider, they're asking them, does your high school participate in baseline testing? And then our parents will, will say yes. Um, they'll actually have a place that they can start with them. So.
Yeah, I just have the one question about, um, on the agenda, we titled this as the year-end activities report, and I just wondered if there was a plan for other extracurriculars?
Um, no, I, I guess my understanding is that.
This is athletics and then, but Jeff is really in charge of extracurriculars. So it would, it would seem to me that, um, eh, not wanting to do all this in the same night, but it would seem that if he is reporting on activities, it would be all the activities he would supervise, including the other extracurriculars.
I think last year, I think you did do that. And I think you, I, I do remember seeing a report that listed all that, because it is, I, I had the same question actually. It's interesting to know how many of our kids are taking advantage of all the other activities, like from forensics to, you know, we have so many and I think.
And that wouldn't be a bad report because it's easy to, this stuff is easy to collect and get this, when we go to our clubs and, and, uh, activities, it's not impossible to get, but it's a,
It's harder.
Well, it's a little bit different because, but I think it would be good. And the fact, like I was saying, with some of our kids that don't get, that are name printed, they're still putting the effort forward. They're still attaining things that sometimes they don't get the recognition for.
So is that something that would be hard to do from last year, but this year, if you know now that we'd like to see something like that at the end, is that, oh, that makes sense to?
I can work with our advisors as far as putting, you know, just some framework together. And then as the year goes on, we build our report, uh, through, you know, they, their seasons aren't clean cut like full.
Right. They're kind of all year or something.
Those things that each of our, each of our offerings, we can easily grab some kind of piece and, and, you know, we can start in on the report.
Well, there are individual honors and then club honors and things like that.
For example, they always get national honors. And then, and, um, just, just knowing numbers of kids who are in those, I think is nice to have. If that, if something you can do for next year.
Cause we still, we put them into groups and we still can track, you know, their, their, uh, GPS and all that stuff as well too, to kind of merge some of the pages and stuff.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make sure. Thank you.
Um, then, then move on to, uh, we have the Director of Services Report, Summer Projects Update.
Ah, yes. Mark, you want to come up and join us, Mark? Uh, so in your board packets, uh, we gave you a capital project update as long as the base three updates. Every summer is always challenging, especially when you have major projects going on and, and we continue to, every summer, make our projects bigger and bigger and bigger, it seems like. So, um, and one of the things that, uh, we do, um, we are looking forward to and, uh, trying to mentally plan for is as school calendars change, the summers get shorter and shorter. So, trying to get, uh, all the summer projects done isn't always the easiest. Would you say, Mark? Um, so what we've done here is we've taken the capital budget that you guys had approved, the line items, and we went through and listed the things that had been, what percentage completion they're at. Some of the things that are not complete are going to be scheduled for like holiday breaks. So we'll get them in during the, um, the school year. So they're, they're done in this budget. Um, I think the, the biggest, the biggest project that everybody's probably anticipating is where are we at with the Cottage Grove Elementary School? The Cottage Grove Elementary School is expected to be, uh, turned back over to us, uh, this coming Friday. Uh, we have, uh, majority of the rooms have been cleaned. However, there are about thirteen to fourteen rooms that are remaining that we are unable to get into right now. So, um, we will have a number of crews that will be there starting Monday, working through the week. And we have movers coming in on the nineteenth and the twentieth, and we'll be opening the building for staff to come back on the twenty-second to start setting up their classrooms. Um, so that's where we're at, um, barring no major surprises this week. Um, they, McKinstry has reassured us that they will be done by Friday to turn over the building. The building won't be completely, complete. It will be allowing us to get into the building so we can get in the classrooms and stuff because they still have commissioning and some things to do on the roof. Um, I did ask Mark to join us today to, uh, go over some of the projects that he's working on, um, answer any questions that might be here. Cause he does, he deals with this on a daily basis. Uh, he keeps me abreast of all the information that's going on and, uh, but we wanted to give you, because obviously school's starting in a couple of weeks. Staff comes back next week. Um, and so if there's any questions, you know, we would be happy to entertain those. Or is there, Mark, anything that you would like to say?
No, I think you've done. You've done much better than I would probably say.
Thank you, Mark.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I just have a question and it's just out of curiosity sake. These, what are water refill stations?
That's interesting that you ask that. Of all the projects in my career here, I was told that if I got those in the high school, I would be a hero. Go figure. Um, there are two, I'm wearing, uh, two this year. Uh, they're quite expensive, but what they are is they replace the existing bubblers. So there'll be a bubbler, so you can still drink like a bubbler. And then there's a water fill, filling, water bottle filling station attached to it. Um, they're not cheap, um, so it was not something high on my list, but, uh, as more and more kids are carrying water bottles and whatnot, it is something that we should be looking at.
No, bubbler is what people in, grew up in other parts of the country would call a drinking fountain?
Yeah, correct. I mean, it's kind of like soda or pop. Bubbler, water fountain, similar. But that's what those are. And they're filtered, so, um, yeah, we have to change the filter yearly. Um,
Yes.
Yeah, they're, they're nice. So if that's what I get, um, if, if that's what I get my recognition for out of twenty-five years of service. I'm in. I'm in. Well, yeah, I'm having it in great. I'm both of them. Uh, we are planning on adding two more next year, then that'll complete the high school. And then we were going to just see how this works out. Um, you know, obviously any new buildings that we may build should have those in them anyways. That's what we'll be putting in, or I would recommend to put in.
Uh, a few of the items I see that are showing not complete and with no, uh, dates on them as far as, uh, scheduled completion.
Yeah, the gym floor resealing, uh, was scheduled the week of the John Clement service. So, um, booking that months in advance, um, they're booked. Those companies are booked solid. Uh, trying to work with Mr. Schreiner on when we can, we need four days. Um, you know, to have the gym completed for us so the floor can dry adequately, uh, before anybody can go on it. So, getting that accomplished at the high school is going to be a small miracle. So that's why there's no date at this time. Uh, we may just hire the company to come in and try to do a, oh, not my recommendation, but to try to just do a, a one coat seal. Whether we can get that done before basketball season, I, I don't know at this time. Uh, the asphalt behind the press box, that kind of changed a little bit based on the fencing that we're putting up there now. So I'm waiting to see how the fencing turns out to see what we might want to do with the asphalt. That will not be done before the game, the first football game. It's not, uh, in total disarray. It's just how this new fencing is going to work out for the asphalting to be done. Do we want to do it? And are we going to change it up a little bit? Um, what was it?
The press box.
Press box renovation, it, that's ours. I mean, that's internal. We've already done some. We put new carpet down and whatnot. Uh, Mr. Schreiner wanted some cabinets removed and stuff. We just have not had the time to do it nor the staff this summer. So, there's not a date on it. We're going to get to it as soon as I get the four people on board and I can rework some of my staff to get over there and finish it out. It's nothing major. It's very minimal. Uh, cafeteria tables, they're coming. Oh, I'm sorry. There's dates on everyone. Um, is that it?
Yeah, those were, so those are just ones that we didn't have specific dates yet. But obviously the goal is to have them completed within this budget cycle.
Any other questions?
Thank you. It's nice to have that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Um, do we want to take a break before we go to the next?
Please.
Sure. Take a short break. Actually.
I'm getting old. I gotta lock off my leg.
So you can go, George. We just had a request and I'd like to, unless anybody has objection, move. We have one action item tonight, um, involving Honeywell Building Solutions that, um, I'd like to move up now so that Mark doesn't have to stay around through the whole rest of it.
Shirley, oh, come on. He loves being here.
So, so if there's no objection, we'll move to H action items and discussion possible for both Honeywell Building Solutions District Security Proposal.
I'll start and then Jared and Mark can kind of take it from there. Um, if you recall, the board was informed, um, a couple of months ago, some concerns with our performance, with our contract with our current vendor Stanley with regard to school security. And we're, we're in the process of obtaining quotes and, um, from various vendors. And during that time, before we had an opportunity to bring a proposal to the board, we had a, um, I would say a crisis, uh, with our security system, um, this past week, uh, or past two weeks. And so Jared and Mark will talk through what happened and what we are recommending for a solution.
So yeah, so as Dan had mentioned, uh, back at the, uh, I did do a background administrative content for you. Obviously we're dealing with security, so I don't want to, um, be very specific of the areas that we're concerned with because obviously it opens up the door for the district to potentially be, um, vulnerable with. But, um, so back in June eleventh at the closed board meeting, I expressed some of our concerns with our current contractor, uh, Stanley Security. We are entering into the last year of that contract and there is a remaining balance on the contract. However, um, about two weeks ago, the, um, door programming system that we have and is, is a very archaic outdated system that we had been requesting to get up. that we had been requesting to get upgraded, which I think I had also talked to you about in closed session. Completely, that computer crashed, and we're unable to program our doors from the office. We're able to lock them and unlock them manually and stuff like that, but we are at a situation where we are unable to monitor that from Mark's office. We were already in the process of, I was in the process of working with Stanley to finding a compromise on how the district and Stanley could potentially go, work through this partnership to finish out, but at the same time, make sure that we're getting bids and making sure that if we do make a switch, that we're doing it in a competitive, fair market way. So we had brought in two other companies, as well as we did ask Stanley to give us a, what would be a cost to come in and really update our system, which we had been asking for, for the last number of years. So in the, the administrative contact, you'll see that there are three dollar amounts. There's Honeywell for a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, there's Permar, which is a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, and Stanley, which is a hundred and thirty-nine thousand. We are making the recommendation, we'd like to enter into a security contract with Honeywell. We were with Honeywell, sort of the background, and I'll ask Mark to walk through the background, since he was here during all those phases. But Honeywell originally was our, our, our security contractor, and then Honeywell sold out of Wisconsin on security, and then it turned over to Bestlock and now where we're at. But would you give just an overview of how, where we're at today?
Honeywell Security Services was our original installer and provider for our service, so all the equipment that we have currently is Honeywell equipment, so to speak. Honeywell was sold to Best, Bestlock, actually, let me back up, Honeywell was sold to a different company, which was called HSM, which was in short Honeywell Security Monitoring, but they just called them HSM for like a year or so, and then Bestlock purchased them, and then Stanley purchased them after that. And after each purchase or each sale, the, the service, and it just went down, for lack of a better way to put it. So with Honeywell, you know, all, all the product, all the hardware, according to Honeywell, they can interface with right now. So we don't have to make any major changes, is why we haven't looked in the past. We have done some, some bids in the past, but it's a major, obviously, this is a part of it, but there's a lot more to it, cameras, upgrading, getting ourselves to where we need to be. But it's a very intense switchover, so to speak, so it only made sense to look at if we can make it so there's not a big, you know, all new hardware, all new card readers, all new access system and whatever, it seems like it can be pretty much an easy over with, with their product already being in the buildings.
So with, working with Honeywell, they're able to utilize all of our door access systems. What they'll do is they will come in and replace our door programming software. We will no longer need to remote into a soft, one computer that's housed in one building, that if it crashes like what happened this last couple of weeks, we're unable to get the information off of it unless we spend an additional fifteen thousand dollars just to buy the license. And that does not even update our system, that just gives us a new license to continue doing a system that has not been user friendly and has not been able to. One of the things that we're unable to do is we have all new teach, some of our teachers, we have like fifty-three of them that we're hiring, we're unable to give them card access to scan into our buildings. So right now, they have to enter in through doors that are unlocked until we get a new system. We've worked, we've talked through with Honeywell, they're able to finance this over seven years, which is about twenty-one thousand dollars, which will take part of that out of our contingency in our capital budgets. And then their, their service contract is about eleven thousand dollars less than our service contract that we have right now. So between those two, we'll be able to put this in our budgets and, and work through updating our system. So we'll get a, immediately within the, the first two weeks, Honeywell will be able to come in and program our doors, get us back into control. And then as that, as the year progresses, we will update our DVR, so we're going to be able to have access for our cameras that are at the high school and Collateral Drummond to have longer recording times, but then the other part of it is, is part of our security plan, is to be able to give our local emergency personnel the ability to tap into this. So if there is a situation where there's an active shooter or an incident in the building, that the, the emergency personnel can look at it from outside and to know where they need to go and how we can evacuate. But the other part of it is, is that Mark at the district office has a view of all the buildings as well. And then as we slowly progress, we will move into IP cameras, so we won't have to have all the cords running from one camera all the way to one office. So if we need to move an office, we don't have to worry about moving all the cords, they will all be IP addresses where we can log into them anywhere with the IP address. So all the costs here, it won't be anything that we, once we put it in, we don't have to say, oh, we put thirteen thousand dollars, we gotta get a different DVR to move that way. All this is setting us up for the foundation to move forward. Unfortunately, we do have that remaining balance with Stanley that I have notified them that we disagree with, that we don't believe that they've performed their contract. And at this point, we are moving forward with avoiding the contract due to non-contract performance and moving, we're like, we're asking for recommendation, or we're bringing a recommendation for Honeywell moving forward with them, so.
Avoiding the contract performance, how much, how much balance would there be there for us?
So right now, it's at forty-two thousand dollars. That's what we owe, we've asked them, I've asked them since July, June eleventh, that they would tell me if there's going to be any agreement that we can start. I believe that Stanley, Stanley will contest that, yes.
But it's also your belief that we're on fairly solid footing that we, that you've documented, I mean, Jared, the point you brought before, yeah. The lack of performance.
We're on our fifth salesperson in the last year. And it's not because they're, they're just giving us a new one because we're hard to deal with, they've left the company, and then what we always continuously hear is that, oh, that should have been told with the previous person.
Another question, is this, is this the security system associated with our purchase, I think it was about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, after we had the security consult, consultation report, or is it the general security?
So this is our general, so all the stuff that we did for that three hundred thousand dollar project, all that stuff is still working. What this does, this is the foundation, that when we purchased all the other stuff, all that tied into the, this is like the brain of the operations.
Well, it's not all the new stuff.
It's not all the new stuff, this is stuff that we've had that we needed to get updated, and we were going to try to work through at the end of the contract.
And the new stuff. This will take, Honeywell will be able to integrate, it's the same product that we had, so they'll be able to take over, that's what they've told us. So it is the new additions and changes that we made as well, that's part of it.
Okay, anyway, motion to approve the Honeywell Building Solutions District School Security Proposal as presented.
So.
It's been moved and seconded, are there any other questions? All right, so then those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, motion case, thanks, Mark.
Thanks.
Then we will go back up to board reports, and first board report is the Teacher Compensation Committee meeting.
Well, we haven't had a recent meeting, and I came met with Dan this afternoon thinking there's a meeting tomorrow night. I had it on my calendar, but there is, it's not on your calendar. It's not on Dan's, and I trust if I called Andrew, it would not be on his. So, but we did, so there's been no, there's been no further action taken from the last report, except to say at the next, at the next meeting, maybe you can take it from here, Dan, what we, what we kind of decided that, what we might, what we might be doing with bringing back the consultant and all that card.
Sure. So we're really, we have a good foundation, at the last meeting, we more clearly defined the different levels that we would identify teachers in the compensation system, and where we're really, the hard work right now is, you know, the concept of master or distinguished teacher and leadership, and how we're defining those. And so we've got some work, a lot of work that the committee has done. When we come back to the next meeting, I'll be working with, you know, Andrew and whomever else to help bring some suggested definitions and criteria that we'll continue to work on to try to make it very objective to identify those things. And so, and the level five and six is what we're working on. And then the other piece that we haven't even begun work on yet is how the salary, you know, fit into this. And so we're ready to start looking at our current compensation or the old system and how it might translate in as well. And so that's the work that we're doing as a committee. And then, as you recall, we do have a consultant that we worked with early on, we haven't used them in quite some time. Our committee's been working very independently, but they've been working with a lot of school districts around the state, so we believe it's time to share with them, okay, here's the work that we've done, get some feedback, and as far as moving forward to maybe suggestions to enhance our work. Just to keep in mind that the, the contract that we had with them wasn't kind of a pay-as-you-go, so we have not come anywhere close to what the, we have budgeted an amount of between fifteen thousand, I think we've only used five thousand dollars or so on those services, and, and I expect it'll be minimal from this point on. But I think where their real expertise is in helping us, you know, work out the metrics with the, the salary piece, and again, you know, just to kind of clean up in that finished product. But I don't, I expect a very limited amount of work with them as well as we finish this, that I think our committee has been doing very fine.
Yeah, we kind of, I think the, the original consultant kind of helped us organize and think about it a bit, but the committee has worked without it. But I think the idea here is we have, we have an organized plan, we have our goals and objectives to have at least one look, not to engage the consultant again for overall work. And Dan, I, I think too, the reason we're looking at the leadership factors for those top two is, up to this, up to the point of, before last meeting, we, we were relying a lot on the, on the Danielson evaluation form, item four B, I think it is. But I think that having teachers and principals in at the last meeting, and we asked the question about, what was the, the question was yours really, Peter, if, if you had identified the leadership qualities of your, your best teachers, that type of thing. And the discussion, I think, was, was so, was very rich, and I think that, in fact, the ideas came so fast and furious, I couldn't, I hope somebody got them all down, because, and I think I came away from that, I think most of us came away from that, thinking that it's nice to have Danielson four B, but I think if we can take some of the ideas of our own staff and our own teachers there, on what constitutes leadership, we will have a, kind of an addendum to the evaluating that, that leadership component in that, that section. And we may go there, we may not, but at least we can, we can talk about it.
Then next, concerning other questions, next would be the WSB Leadership Institute, that both Susan and I actually, we can have closer?
The second.
The second, yeah.
Saturday, thanks a lot, guys.
So you want to go first?
Sure, sure. I went to track two, which was accountability, and it was taught by directors of their individual areas from DPI, which was, I thought, really, really helpful, because it gave you a very objective in terms of WSB or the Wisconsin Association of School Administrators. It, it kind of gave you a good idea of what DPI is going to expect in relation to some of these accountability programs. The first track was, as you might expect, educator effectiveness, preparing for two thousand and fourteen and fifteen. They talked again a little bit about the history and how the Wisconsin system is different, and basically, they consider their system, it sounds like us and where we want to go. They considered a growth tool, an instructional process that helps to identify differences and then how to improve. So again, that's our goal, and that's continuous improvement. The system involves looking at data, setting an instructional goal, student learning objectives, SLOs, monitoring progress, and setting a goal for improvement. So again, then evaluating, so it's exactly kind of what we do, and it's, should integrate well into our current system. There are multiple assessment measures within the system, again, you've already heard this piece, including fifty percent based on evidence of educator practices, the actual practice, fifty percent based on evidence of student outcomes. Teacher practices include scores for components in the Danielson framework for teaching, and principals include the Wisconsin framework for principal leadership, which is still involving all the. One of the things the DPI director has said to us at this time, as a board, that we should be doing to prepare ourselves as board members in being knowledgeable about this within our district, is to make sure there is prepared and posted a written schedule for training and implementation, or something where we can access that if we have questions about it and see that it's being done, and kind of what the, what the structure is for implementation. Provides, they, we should be getting updates as implementation completion occurs, and Dan has been giving those to us, who's gotten trained, who's getting trained. But again, the full implementation plan, I think, would be helpful. And that they were very, very clear about being district-wide, and maybe that should be integrated into our communication plan, about being very transparent with parents and teachers and the community about what we're doing and how we're doing it. Provide detailed and ongoing communication about this plan and its implementation. Apparently, there's a Wisconsin Administrator's Communication Toolkit that was sent out last year to administrators that's supposed to be helpful. Implementing the common core, that stuff we already know. The session provided historical background on the formation of the standards and reinforced that they are not curriculum, they are standards that are statements about what students should know or be able to do. Individual school districts decide how the students get there. And they included a review of mathematics and English language standard, and those are posted on DPI, you can do some of the sample work if you want to do that. Accountability in Wisconsin, they talked about the school report card, the district report card, and those are to be released in September. And if you go to the DPI website, they'll tell you more about the detail. Hopefully, when we get that, they'll give us, they'll go through that and give us the individual information for us. New assessments in Wisconsin, you probably already knew this, during two thousand and fourteen, fifteen, Wisconsin will launch the Smarter Balance Assessment in grades three through eight, and the ACT, isn't it nice, they're catching up to us, isn't that fun, you should enjoy that. And the ACT High School Assessments in grades nine, ten, and eleven. So we've already, five years ago, we implemented the requirement that all students take ACT, now the state of Wisconsin is saying that's going to happen. The gift for us should be that that's now going to be funded out of the governor's budget, so that should help us, because we've been paying for that ourselves. DPI stressed that it's important for each district to provide a schedule for implementation and items to be addressed during the implementation process. The suggestion for districts already utilizing ACT like us, for all students was to have an update on current practice and changes that might be occurring in response to integration of the state mandate. The example they gave is, the state actually gives the ACT test rather than us taking that through ACT, and they have very strict scheduling times, so that may change when we give it. So we're going to have Aspire in ninth grade, Aspire in tenth grade, and ACT in eleventh grade. I'm assuming, so that's why it's helpful to have an assessment of the current, what we're, what we're doing now and what we're going to continue to do. So are we going to continue to do the ACT components in sixth and seventh and eighth grade? And how's that going to integrate with the Smarter Balance? So they made it, they were pretty emphatic about making sure that we're getting updates on how that may affect our current structure.
Yep, that's helpful, and we'll be, in fact, I just today met with Andrew about when we give our report to the board about our continuous improvement plan and, and, you know, data from last year about that as well. What about the things that aren't specifically part of those plans, but, you know, there's a lot of high school data that Paul and his team look at, you know, whether it be ACT graduation rates and so on, and then looking ahead at the, the assessments coming up. That is something, you know, they have all worked out already with Andrew and the principals, but we make sure we include it as part of the report.
Well, I think we need to make sure we get the dates up, because those are already set. I mean, DPI has said you will be taking the ACT on this date, and if that changes from what students already did, and that could affect them, the sooner we get those dates up, I think, the more proactive we'll be.
Well, I think those do get communicated to parents and staff, I think what you're asking is, you want, you want board members to know or have it on the website, or, I mean,
Well, I'm saying those are.
When you have the dates, they.
I'm saying those are up right now. I'm saying those are up right now.
Right?
Right. Our staff has them.
They have, yeah.
Okay. Well, especially if they're going to change. So let's say you had a sophomore, and you already had on your calendar for next year the date for the ACT, and that's changed, and they're pretty strict about when you can take it. There's only like one makeup date. There isn't a lot of room. I just think it's going to be real important that whatever changes from what we currently do, in the old days, you could go take the ACT at another school.
Well, that was, yeah.
I'm just saying, whatever changes, that's going to be real important, that that gets out to the community. That's what they told.
Just a comment perhaps. I think when you're talking about how we're ahead in that, I think, I think it was in fact, about two or three years ago, it was this school district.
We testified.
That actually did the testimony in front of the joint education committees, that were one of two districts to propose it. And I think, Paul, you were part of that, weren't you, or?
Mm-hmm.
That was one, and.
Andrew was there.
Andrew was there too.
Well, I attended a different, I attended the governance track that day, and it was actually pretty helpful. It was led by WSB facilitators, but, you know, one of the helpful things about going to some of these sessions is the networking that you do with other boards, board members, and what they're doing, and it covered topics like just leadership style and how that can impact interactions with the board. And I thought a lot of it was relevant to me, just over looking over the last year and the last several months. Effective school board practices, establishing protocols and practices, and some of this are things will be related to what we'll be talking about in our workshop. Communication and trust building, stress and leadership positions, that was primarily the element of stress on superintendent, because it's kind of a 24/7 job, and they talked about that. And then, what does data tell you was kind of the last piece, and that was combined with accountability, and that one was probably a little less helpful, but just on kind of how to make sure you're using the right data and getting the right kinds of information as to, but it was, it was a useful presentation, I thought. The third track was a finance track, which I didn't go to, because I've heard that a lot in the past, but they're excellent. It was very well, that was very high marks from people who did attempt, so that's it. Then we will move on to, we have the next discussion items under G. The first one is the draft proposal for the teacher retirement benefits.
Okay. The board had heard a, gotten an update, I don't remember the exact time, June 11th, on where the work that's been done on the teacher retirement plan. The handbook committee, again, recently met on July 29th to review some revisions to the proposal, and I think Jared and I don't think Cole's going to join, and we have our handbook committee members here as well to talk through a little bit about what some of those revisions are. We are scheduled to meet again as a handbook committee on August 19th. And moving forward, the goal at this point is to actually have a final proposal to bring to the board in September. But we want to wait till teachers return, that we can communicate, you know, the final proposal as well, before the board takes final action. But we're getting closer to a final plan. So with that, I'll turn it over to our experts to give the details.
So attached is the teacher retirement benefit draft proposal. There has not been much change in that. We're starting to do that fine tuning of getting, making sure we got the legal language in there. But on the costing scenario, I think that sums up some of the changes that we have talked about since. So at the June 11th meeting, and I think the direction of the committee has been that the comfort level of assisting in making this move forward and getting it fully funded is that that borrowing limit of $2 million. So, right now, with tier three, that would be, most of our new hires or individuals that have been here, about that eight to 10 year mark, we have planned on doing a deposit into a trust fund or a 403, into a trust fund based on the years of service. And then tier two is a sliding scale, so based on the year that you're eligible for retirement, you would get a certain dollar amount deposited into a 403B over a certain number of years based on when you retire. One of the feedbacks that we had heard is that tier two individuals were concerned that the lower part of that scale, down towards that 82,500, that wasn't enough to potentially assist them in funding health insurance or dental insurance to what they were planning on. So during discussions at the committee level, we made some modifications. So on the costing scenario, that's delayed, dated July 29th, it shows that the first chart is the previous one that we had brought in June, and the second chart shows the updated version that we have put into the proposal and talked with the teachers about. That starts us out at the $185,000 benefit level, maxes them out there, and then goes down to $135,000. We were really looking at that 135, 140 mark, that if someone needed to purchase about seven years of health insurance, based on what we're anticipating health insurance inflation to look like, this would be able to give them there. But it also gives them the ability to use that money in a manner that they would choose. Then, the other area that we had to deal with was, individuals felt that we weren't doing enough for the years of service rewards. So as a subcommittee, there was some discussion of how can we do that, but yet we have this $2 million borrowing that we needed to stay in. So what we had talked about, the last proposal that was put on the, on the table, was to do a one-time year service reward. So anybody that, at the end of this school year, 14, 15, that had 10 years of service, we would give them $250 per year of service up to, so if you were, if you qualified in tier one, you didn't qualify for the year's service, because that's the grandfathered group. But tier two and tier three individuals, if you had 10 years or more of service, we would deposit into either the trust or a 403B at $250 times your service. So what we're working on now that we have to be ready for on the 19th is, I'm taking out all individuals that have left the district and adding the new individuals to see if we're able to increase that $250, if we can expand it down to more of 10 years instead of, instead of 10 years, down to maybe nine years or eight years of people, so that we're trying to incorporate more individuals. We're getting closer. It's been a longer task than I had anticipated, but, so that's what we're looking at now, and so we'll have a subcommittee and teacher handbook committee, and then obviously, come back to the board, and then, you know, have some more meetings when all the teachers are back to sort of take the plan out to get some feedback on, based on the information that we gathered from our last listening sessions, how we've tweaked that, and if there's other comments that we need to, that if we're able to make those tweaks. But right now, you know, we're at, we're keeping it at that $2 million borrowing mark. We do believe that that's as, as high as we really should go for our budget. And obviously, it's unpredictable what the future budget years are going to look like. We don't want to overcommit ourselves, but we also want to respect and honor our staff that have been here for a number of years.
Just ask, ask a question, I think, I hope you will, I think it's clear to me, but the 250 years per year of service is, is to be applied to teachers who have already served, right?
Yes.
And that's not to be extended in the future?
Correct. This is a one-time, just to honor the request of, we would like to see this more tied back to the year service concept.
Yeah, it's sort of a transition piece of it. That's kind of how they're looking at it. And while the amount is not as high as they had hoped it would be, it seemed to me that they understood our commitment to not borrow more than $2 million, that this is the best we can do. And the thought is, as Jared said, if he goes back through these tier two people, maybe even sort of tier three, to look at who has left and who's, who comes off of these charts, that may free up a little bit of additional money that we may be able to raise that, but we aren't, we don't know until he has time to look through that, so that's.
I think, I think the, I don't know, maybe the rest of the committee could respond too, for the benefit of everyone. But I, I think that the listening sessions and the feedback, the two or three, three rounds at least that we've had here, in the sense I have, is that, is that the staff feels, that at least the committee has, has tried to be responsive into filling gaps that were discovered. They won't all be solved, because they're just, every teacher has a different circumstance, and the effort we're putting into it, I think, has been, well, wouldn't you, would you, would you concur with that, the rest of the committee? I think we're.
Please, so, yeah. So I think we're.
I think it's been, I think it's been a good communication exercise.
So our, our hope is, if we have that ready by the 19th, then we would, I'm not sure if we're thinking yet that we're bringing it back to them one more time, and then we're.
I think, you know, we'll decide at that meeting where we're at. But we certainly want to come up out of that meeting with a plan on the communication to the entire staff, and.
And then we're, when we'll come to the board for final.
Yeah.
Should be wrapping up, Susan. Thank you. Then the next item is the draft proposal for extracurricular and additives papers.
Okay, I'll talk about this one, and again, the people that have been involved, the committee can sincerely add any additional input. A number of you have seen, it's been to two different committees. The personnel committee had reviewed this at a prior meeting, the teacher compensation committee has, and the former members that have not been on those committees, this is the first time that you've seen this. The, this has been a long process to get to this point. There was, I think, is identified a couple of years ago, a need to really do some work on the additive, you know, schedule, and to provide more equity with it, and really bring it up to date with what the current positions are. So there was a committee that met two years ago, comprised of teachers and administrators, that did a thorough assessment of each position, you know, the requirements for the positions, and they came with some recommendations, in some cases, very direct recommendations, that here's what the compensation should be. Other parts of their recommendation were, we, you should take a look at these, they're a little bit, you know, inequitable, but the administrative part, you know, should make a recommendation. So we took all that information, I gathered that last school year, about November is when we received it. And then from that point, throughout the second semester, Jeff Schreiner took the lead on it, because so much of it was tied to the activities in extracurriculars, worked closely with the principals, with Paul Brosse at the high school, and Renee Tenet with the middle school pieces. And so we came back with some, you know, a draft. This is still a draft tonight, it's not final. We presented it to the, at the last compensation committee meeting. We had teacher input on that, and the one thing that was noted is that there were some recommended reductions in some of them. The ideas, again, to have more equitable compared to the other ones that we're paying, but it was certainly not the intent to, you know, take money away. We did say that whatever we agree to here, we'd like to grandfather people in if there is a reduction. But we did agree to go back and take a look at a couple of those reductions. I haven't had a chance to specifically follow with the principals, that we'll be doing that before our next meeting, and we'll either come back and say, here's the rationale, we stay with the recommendation, or perhaps we might recommend, you know, some slight adjustments yet. But the idea is that the next teacher compensation committee, we'll go back and review that, and then we'll come back to the board with a final recommendation on this as well, at the next board meeting. So if there are revisions to this, it'll be very minor, but we want to get these in place, because it does affect the fall activities schedule, and so, and the people that are involved with fall activities do start getting their payment when the season starts. So actually, we start in the September payroll, but so we, if we can get the board approval on this at the next meeting, then we'll be up to date. So it's, I think, a tremendous improvement, the work that was done with our teachers initially, the administrators. Jeff and Paul particularly put a lot of time and effort into this. The majority of these are high school positions, and we believe they're much more equitable. They looked at, not only with comparing the activities we have within our district, looking at comparables on the outside as well, and we think is a pretty fair plan. So this would be an opportunity, if you have any questions on it, we can certainly, you know, explain some of the rationale, and otherwise, we'll bring back a final proposal next meeting.
Any questions, Susan?
Dan, I just wanted to make sure that I, that I understood this. Effectively, it was my understanding that these additives did reflect some documented criteria for determination, so including things like hours and number of students and things like that.
Yes.
Okay, so I think it's really important that we make sure that's clear.
That was included, yeah.
And then, the, there was specifically some teacher input on those that were reduced, so I'm just validating that you did say you were going to, I mean, there were some very significant reductions and things that looked like a mix between curriculum and extracurricular, particularly in the music area.
Yes.
Okay, and you're, you're going to go back and look at those? I thought we were going to be seeing those tonight, so that we would get a first, get a read on those tonight, rather than.
That's what he was just saying, he hasn't had time to do yet.
Oh, okay, so, but effectively, that means that we're going to have to come in on.
Well, if there are.
Weeks and approve them that night, seeing them that night with no other input.
Well, if there are revisions, they'll be very minor. For, for instance, middle school music positions, on page two of the.
Is it the additive or the?
Extracurricular schedule. And if you look at the middle school jazz band, so it's towards the bottom of the music piece, GDS, you see the current pay is $903, and the recommended, and the new schedule starts at 720. Okay, so a reduction of, you know, about $200. And so the question was, well, you know, when we looked at that, okay, why the reduction? And so, I want to go back and reexamine again, I know it was, there was thought put into that with how that, the commitment for the teacher to do that activity versus the other ones, but that's, so if there were a change, and we were talking a couple hundred dollars, it would be a very small piece. There's only a handful of those like that. All know, the document as a whole has been, you know, vetted very closely and has been, you know, line by line. So those are the last pieces that I didn't feel that I, I didn't, I don't think had good enough answers for the committee about why, the rationale. That's where I wanted to go back with the other, you know, the administrators and spend time and really talk about that. So I'll either come back with a justification, a more firm justification, or a recommended revision on those.
And that will be vetted with the committee. So when you said it wouldn't have a chance to be vetted, that's where it will be vetted.
Perfect, okay, good.
And then we'll come to the board.
Good, okay, I appreciate that. But I think the ones, a couple of the ones that were specifically identified, and maybe I'm reading this wrong, was band director?
Well, there were a number of, mostly not athletic ones.
Reduction, and, yeah, and show choir?
Uh, I think they have.
But again, if, if, just make sure you, we've highlighted those and it's real clear, because not only did we address those as a committee, but I think that was addressed by staff as well.
They were, yeah.
Okay. And some of those are really borderline.
Right, it's just a matter of.
Okay, sure. I just want to make, I just want to validate.
And there were criteria that they threw out in asking the questions about, one of them meets at 7:30 in the morning, you know, that kind of stuff. I don't know how much that was.
Number of kids, yeah.
So that was part of, that'll be part of the answer, if you.
The, just the little history, I think, we threw at you before you became superintendent, when the handbook committee dealt with these earlier, we had asked that these be based on the job description and not be indexed. And I looked at the overwhelming task to write job, a lengthy page job description on each one of these. But I do think that when we talked about this in teacher compensation, I believe the criteria that you identify, and every time you've talked, you've mentioned two or three of them, but not all five or six of them each time. I think it would be useful that if you could lead off this section here, and identify the type and the criteria that were used, even though some of them would not always apply to every one of the categories. I don't think you need to say that you, that you kept the status quo if there was a reduction or something like that. But I think the criteria that you had, at least comes close to the elements of the job description that had it been written, and that I think that would be a good history for the next group that enters into this. So if you and Jeff and whoever else is involved could identify the six or seven of those as applicable.
That's a good idea, because they used a standard form, and it had all those on the form, so all it would be is a matter of taking form and doing a bullet list of what's on there. And it was, there was kind of a job description that they had to write what their job was, but they're self-reporting what their job was. And then, all those other criteria. So that is a good idea.
Yeah, I think that would be a good record that you, for the next people that start
this, and it would also be a lead-in. this, and it would also be a lead-in explanation that would do that.
Anything else? All right, then we will move on to the Policy Committee. And first item on the Policy Committee is our reports.
Okay, the Policy Committee met on July 28th. There was ongoing committee discussion relating to utilization of Niola for full, for a full policy review. There was committee discussion on Board Policy 363, Internet Safety and Accessible Use. A draft utilizing the WSB sample policy with some modifications was approved by the committee. You have that draft. The committee chair then made, since that time, I've made some additional non-substantive amendments to add clarity and readability. You have that version as well. Further board guidance may be added as we reach that board agenda item, so again, you can look at that and see. What we've learned is, and we can talk about this in a little more depth in a minute, the committee at this time on that particular policy recommended approval of the companion rule without additional amendments. So basically what we did is, as a committee, we approved the WSB sample with some minor revisions made by administration. It, it continued to have some readability issues, so I was trying to make those better, because I think it's important that this be a very readable and understandable policy. So that's why you'll see the second edition. 443.2 is basically a policy that we won't need and we recommend a deletion, since it's going to be covered under the revisions to the Internet Safety and Accessible Use policy. And then 522.7, Staff Use of Information Technology, again, was pretty readable and clear and updated, and the committee recommended approval, so that would come to the board at the meeting at the end of the month. Board Policies 185 is standing committees, and 186, the committee followed a standardized process for review and update of these policies. And the draft resulting from the board process, the committee process, was presented to the board in September. The committee process of full review and decision-making on specific criteria provided an analytical review of the process that would be required for committee review of all board policies. And wake up, just so you hear this, it took us four hours in that committee meeting, which included a pretty rapid approval of some policies, which you'll see tonight, but this type of review took a significant period of time, over two hours. For a policy which we've already had significant discussion on, so that, again, gives you an idea of what could happen if we try and do for a full board policy review. There are 12 policies currently slated for review and a revision for the September meeting. We did four last, last month. The pending agenda does address the pending, does, the pending agenda does not address the pending full policy review of approximately 318 policies, administrative rules, and just so you know. Are you jumping up and down to be on?
Okay, and then what I'd like to do is follow that up, because you kind of, it's a lead-in to Item C here, which is to actually discuss the policy that was approved, the proposed amendments, and before we go to the Niola item. And so, without objection, we go to C, and the first item there is the first reading of these, of Policy 363.2, the Student Acceptable Safe and Responsible Use of Technology Resources. So Dan, do you want?
Sure. I put in your executive summary a quote from the Policy Resource Guide from WSB, because this is a unique policy. In most cases, your policies are very clear. Here is the directive, you know, and how it works. For acceptable use, this one is written in a way that, because it changes so often, and we have pretty specific administrative guidelines that we write as far as the student use, so the policy basically says, administration, you shall write administrative guidelines that include this, this, and this. And that's not what most of our policies look like, so that's, one of the challenges we had in writing this is a little bit different concept. As Susan mentioned, the samples were not, they're challenging to work with. This is one that we identified a year ago, that we are way out of compliance. This was before we had our wireless network. The old, or the current policy basically bans students from bringing their own devices. Well, in fact, we encourage them to bring their own devices and use them educationally, so it really needs to be updated. And so throughout the year, it's been a little bit frustrating. Bill Herman has spent a lot of time looking at samples from other districts. No one really seems to have good, well-written policies that we can say, this fits what we want to do, so to try to write something like this from scratch and make sure that you, you know, you have a lot of things in there that are, are really important, I don't want to say necessarily on a legal piece, but there's some of it. There's compliance with the CIPA laws and so on with regard to, you know, internet filtering for students, and so there are some, I guess, some legal pieces. And so we administratively, a couple months ago, thought perhaps the board might approve contracting with Niola, and so we kind of put on hold and said, okay, if we do that, they'll help write the policy. When that didn't happen, we went back and said, well, we need a new policy for the start of the school year. So we grabbed the samples from WSB, we found the one that fit most closely with what we believe should be the rules for our students, and the actual policy, we didn't make a ton of changes. The administrative guidelines, we spent more time on that, that's really what we'll share with the students. But it is written, it's not an easy to read document, it's have everything in there that we need, and so, so that was one that, it's just a hard policy to write. And so what you have tonight is what the policy is, what the committee approved. After that, Susan made some recommended amendments, that's also there, and I have read through those, and we have, and we certainly support those amendments. We might look at, so at the next reading, we'll have a clean document with a final, you know, piece there. And then, just so you know, the administrative rule that is also on your notes, that's, goes along with the companion policy, and that's the piece that really is important that we share with the students. So that's how that policy was developed for the student acceptable use, and then along with that, the next one, the, on the electronic communication devices, we're recommending deleting that policy, because that's now contained within the new one that we wrote or the new administrative guidelines. And then the other policy is on the staff acceptable use. With that one, I think we felt more comfortable, that was, you know, better written, and we feel good about that one. So that's kind of the overview of how we wrote the policies. We certainly can talk about the details that are in them, if you have questions on that as well, it's probably the more important piece.
Well, they just added your administrative content, you can see that this, this is because we have, we subscribe to the Resource Guide, we have this background information, if you have a chance to read that, that kind of gives the background of all this, it's so complicated. And I just wanted to clarify, so that when we come back, if people seem to be in agreement tonight with it, we, we did put forth the new policy, and these changes came later, but, so in this administrative content, you'll see the proposed amendment is the second attachment, where it says Policy 362.2, proposed amendment, and then there's a clean version of that, I think, at the end. And basically what Susan did was simply go through and kind of make it easier to read, I think, by putting in some subheadings, so if you can bring that up now, that one, the second attachment, so it hasn't read, you can kind of see.
And again, none of the changes are substantive, they're just, you take, you take language that says.
Can I just finish first? So it breaks it into parts, so the first part is the district administration, and it clearly goes over kind of their rule, and I think the only change that was agreed to with this, when it gets down to listing these, there's one, two, three, when you get to item four, four and five, Susan had added sentences that we've now decided to delete. So, I don't know, bring that up, we're looking at that second attachment, it's on the second page, because they're redundant to a point, it's like points already made in item 11. So basically, we would next week bring back this policy again with the headings that she put in, district administration. She added a sentence at the beginning that just says, we will publish these rules, this kind of general statement. And then broke up the next paragraph into two paragraphs for clarification. So in general, as she said, they weren't substantive, they were just clarifying. And then the next subheading would be.
Administrative content, y'all.
Oh, I said administrative content, yeah, sorry. And then it, and those of us who have our attachments can be bringing it up too, but instruction and training, and then additional provisions regarding Internet safety. So she just kind of broke it up, so it's a little bit easier to read. And then finally, responsibility building principles at the end, so you can kind of look through and see those sections. So I think that's helpful. So if people don't have objection, we probably would bring forth this amended version next week instead of the one that was approved by the committee.
So we won't treat it as a substitute?
No.
Just treat it as?
We'll just change the policy to reflect those changes and then bring it back.
So the amended, the cleaned up amended one is what would be in front of us, and your, the rest of the committee is saying, there's, otherwise there's no substantive differences.
Right, so basically we'd be taking this, under the, under your administrative content, the third policy, that's basically what we'd be looking at, with the exception, we'd be deleting two sentences from it, that's all.
I have another question. On the computer network use one, where it says student use, is this intended as a, as a district policy, or is something that should go in a, a student handbook? Or both?
Both, yeah. So it is district policy that we're sending for all computer use, for all students, K-12, and then those guidelines absolutely.
It reads like it would be in a handbook, almost, student handbook.
Yeah.
So any questions on any of this, or otherwise, we're treating this as the first reading of these policies, and we would bring them forward for board approval at the next meeting. Then we can move on to the next item then, which is discussion again, the Niola proposal.
Okay. I believe in a previous board meeting during the Policy Committee Report, you know, Susan had spoken about, and I think we had a little bit of discussion of the possibility of Niola as a contracting service for our policy writing as opposed to WSB, because they both provide, you know, services. And I did put on the executive summary the cost with, WSB is an annual fee. Right now, we're paying $3,950 per year, and we have access to this Policy Resource Guide, which gives us information, but then we, you know, use that to, you know, revise the policies as needed. $3,950 per year. And the real challenge there is, number one, they probably only have sample policies for about 25% of the ones that we actually have in our policy manual, and then of those ones they have, some are not, if we, we don't always want to just take a sample and adopt it as is. Many times, there's certain pieces of it that we want to, you know, customize to our district, and so that's a real challenge, that means we're writing, you know, ourselves with that. So it is a good resource, but it's far from complete. And so the big difference with Niola is that they, when they write policy for you, will customize it, so when you're doing the acceptable use like we are tonight, we'll go, that probably has 10, 15 bullet points. What are the key pieces? Do you want to allow kids to bring devices? What are the, you know, parameters on that? We answer all those questions, and then they give us the policy based upon that. So they do a lot more of the work, and for that, of course, there's a cost with that. It's a one-time fee to do everything, right, and the policies, guidelines, electronic communication on, you know, hosted on the website, $21,000. So it's a substantial investment, but then once that's done, their annual fee to maintain is $2740, which is cheaper than WSB. So with that, we had talked about, we have a lot of things going on, should we make this proposal now, should we perhaps wait a year? And after, we've had discussion, you know, at the last Policy Committee meeting, the Policy Committee did not vote on this to bring it forward, but I'm bringing it forward as an administrative recommendation, not for action tonight, but, you know, for discussion certainly. The big thing is that, under our current system, we, and we keep using the word capacity, but we really don't have the capacity to get our policy manual up to date. And so with the current system, we're going to update a handful of policies this year, we'll identify the most critical ones, but it's a lot of work, and we're never, we're never making ground in getting it up to date where it needs to be. So at some point, we really need to do this, and I guess, and the more we reflect on is, well, why wait? If it's a one-time cause, get it up to speed, and there's still a lot of effort on our part to work with them to do it, but all the work of writing is the real key piece that they do for us. So I think, we would like to have some discussion about that tonight, certainly our committee, you know, members, you know, have, have a lot of input on that, we've talked about this already, but I, I think it's a real important piece to understand that if we really want to get our manual up to date, this is a way of doing it, probably the only way of doing it. Otherwise, it's going to be a many, many year process, and we may never really get to that point, so.
Well, I, just to piggyback on that, I brought tonight, the policy manual, it's been at my house for over a year, because before Dan came, we, policy, as you all know, has been a very frustrating thing for the last several years, just to get it done, it's just, it's very time-consuming. I actually took us home, and I was going through literally policy by policy, looking at what, and they, we, they had written in what the dates were, and I was trying to look at, were these even up to date with what's on our website? And then, do they correspond with each other? And I kind of gave up after I didn't get very far, and kept thinking I'd get back to it, and I just, I was doing a major cleanup and thought, oh, I still have this manual. So I brought it tonight to show you what we're talking about. I mean, it's under hundreds of pages, hundreds of policies.
318.
Take it back to your office. And just this week, I went online to look up a policy and saw another one where there was a, it's just, it's some cleanup and see it on our website, because it says, for this policy, see this number. Well, it's not there anymore, it's been changed. So there just are infinite little things like that that need to be cleaned up. We have 12 policies on our future agenda item list that are sort of hot-button, need to be, do, need to do things. New ones keep coming up. We, you know, back when I know I was trying to work with this committee, I know one of your goals was to go through each section and update them, and we never got anywhere close, and we still have not done that. We still have some needs to go through, starting with the 100 series. So it just is a very overwhelming task that I think is not going to get done. Clearly, if we don't do something like this Niola, what we, we will not be doing a policy review, because we can't do it. I mean, just to give an example, Susan wrote up some questions, just taking that policy on standing committees, if you were going to approach it the way you should approach it. And she took the time to read the background report, read the policy, and came up with 15 questions that should be answered, or 14 plus the 15 was, do you have any other ones? Things that you should answer in developing the policy. Do you want it to address the establishment of just standing board committees? And then, if yes, this. And, you know, thought through that whole thing. That's the kind of thing Niola would do for us, they would come in with those questions and sit down, spend some time with Dan and whomever else wanted to be involved for each policy. Then, so then what you do is, you spend time in the committee talking about that, you get some direction, and now they have to go back and write it, looking at the Resource Guide, the sample policies, our answer is, why does it have to be updated? It's minimally, for one relatively easy policy like that, a four or five hour job on the part of, probably more than that. I know that I personally already put in two and a half hours on that policy before our last meeting, and now we're totally changing it again. So it's Dan, it's Dan's time, it's his time to do all that, come to the meeting, get our input, go back and write it on one policy, and this is what we're talking about. So I just think it's not realistic to think that we're ever going to have the capacity to do it. So I, we are rethinking, you know, my thought too was, well, you know, we're doing some things, we could put it off, but yeah, but I guess I'm not saying any point in putting it off. I think that getting the policies cleaned up and then knowing that they'll be maintained is an important thing, and I, I think it is worth bringing in the service and just getting moving on it and not delaying anymore. Because it's kind of an exercise in another year of frustration if we just put it off and then come back another year. It's just, because in the end, I think this is the only way we're ever going to get the work done.
We're contractually committed to WSB for you.
We are, for, for the rest of this year. And I think that's not a bad thing, because I think, looking at their, that's the only thing that gives us, and that's why the background has to be in administrative content in your board docs, because that's copyrighted. We have access to it because we have paid that fee. So that would still give us background information to read on some of these policies like this one, where you kind of want to know, okay, what, what do you want to see in the policy? Because we still have to have that conversation with the Niola people, but they would be taking the leadership, and actually, and they, they are tied in with Davis &amp; Keelthall, which is another legal firm in Wisconsin that. which is another legal firm in Wisconsin that does a lot of school district work. So, you have it all vetted by their hair farm, and it's just, it's just a very much more efficient way to do it. So, it is biting the bullet of spending a lot of additional money, or a substantial amount of additional money this year, and then paying less per year to keep it. And yes, we are still continuing with our WASB service for the rest of this year, because we came-
This year is a calendar year, a school year?
This calendar year, at least.
Yeah, this fiscal year.
And I just want to piggyback for a second on that cost issue. Even though the Neola cost looks like a big cost, the thing that Susan mentioned was, it does include legal review, so it's, it's going to be in compliance with, the standard format they give us, is going to be in compliance with state and federal law. And if you go back and look at, for instance, when I know when we were working on the bullying piece, that actually went back to Boardman Clark twice, and we don't have the expense on that, but I'm betting $1,000 each time. So, it went back the first time we drafted it, then when they changed the law, we had to send it back, and that's when Dave Rohr came back.
There were phone calls involved, there were written communications about-
And there was another piece, so, minimally, if you're looking at, even on one policy that has federal and state laws attached to it, and a thousand to $2,000 fee, then that just, on one policy, I think there's a substantial savings in term of, in terms of the attached legal review that we're going to get. It's also my recollection, this could be incorrect, that when the WSB used to offer the service of the review, that that was at least $10,000 when they did the review over 10 years ago.
Yeah, that's the other point we didn't mention, they no longer do that. They used to do it, and they did review all of our policies back in the early 2000s for, we think, close to $10,000.
In addition, so, when you look at the total cost, I think actually, it's kind of like looking at the security issue, it ultimately is going to be a savings.
You, does, you familiar with districts that have had a track record with Neola and everything, and that sort of thing?
Yeah, the last time, and I apologize, I didn't put it on tonight's, but we did last time put a list of all the districts in Wisconsin that contract with them. I have personally spoken to many superintendents and districts that have used them, and every one of them just thrilled with the work that they've done, and said that's the only way to go, and, and that's why, I was familiar with them for several years, and I didn't really look into it that closely until this past year, because of the, you know, challenges we have here. And so, you know, recently, I did follow up again with not only some couple other superintendents, but one of the representatives from Neola, who was a retired superintendent doing the work, and, yes.
What I heard Susan describe the last piece, seems to be a very critical factor, because, to some, what you're saying is, Neola kind of gives a good house, guarantee on the legal, it's had a legal review in terms of Wisconsin statutes, major court findings and that sort of thing, and that if we, that WSB does not necessarily have that, and that, that if we, if we had needing to have that in a critical case, then we would be paying that equal fee. Is that right? I, I did a 10-year cost on it, and Neola would be $48,400, and WSB would be $39,500. So, there's a, basically, I took $21,000, then I took the-
Oh, and then you had it separated over time.
And then it's-
So, it's 89, it's 8,900 for that, and what Susan says is correct, and you think this would be a better service than, you know, what we're talking about is $8,900 spread over 10 years?
Well, we're really, yeah, it's really, it's almost apples and oranges, and the WSB doesn't even offer this service that we'd be paying for this year for Neola. What they do offer is assistance with our own renovating, keeping, doing these updates. The other thing that I don't think we emphasized again tonight, is that they do a minimum, they do at least two updates a year, based on, because they watch the statutory changes in Wisconsin. And they mentioned, just as an example, and that's for that fee of 27, 2190, is, and then they like monitor me, and name these fees the other. So, the $27.40 per year is the total bill for the year, regardless of how many things change, like they gave, they gave the example of when Act 10 hit, and they had to do a bunch of updates, and do a lot of extra work. People still pay the same fee. So, that, that's part of the guarantee that even if, so you may have a year where you don't have as many changes, but there always are some. I mean, our experience since we've been on the board is, there are always a few. Some years there are a lot, some years there aren't, but it evens out. So, it seems like it's an efficient way to get the job done, and just so it's not hanging over us and frustrating everybody.
Well, Susan's point is well taken for me, because that's, that, that's $890 a year difference. I mean, I'm trying to break it down into understandable units, and if, if it, if they do all this work, give legal, good housekeeping seal, and this, I've been wary of farming out stuff and that sort of thing, but this is looking better.
But, in, in all honesty, personally, I mean, you guys know that I spend tons of hours doing this work, and doing this research, and prepping for this, for, for the committee. And, you know, I went into Dan on Monday, and I said, this is overwhelming, not just personally, for me, but to try and then reassign that to additional staff. And I think the, the real true benefit is, we're still going to have, even though we've kind of bought into it, but the WSB resource updating and keeping ourselves informed. But again, it, it gives me such a different level of comfort to be able to have that legal resource overview before we even start on the product. So, Susan said to me, you know, I don't understand, very fairly, I don't understand why you didn't come in with the amendments into the committee on this 363 the other night. And I said, I'm really sorry, I spent six to eight hours researching the 183 committee one, and trying to bring the questions in the draft in, for us to make that workable. So, even to meet the pending policies that we need to directly work on, has been extremely challenging. Dan said, we'll meet quarterly? We're meeting four to five hours monthly. I, I'm just giving, and I'm concerned about it burning out the committee and burning out staff, and-
Well, just getting, being able to get it done, is the main thing. I guess, so we want, we were hoping to get kind of some feedback tonight, so we know whether to bring this back at the end of the month, and just see what people, were you-
Are we on track?
Yeah, yeah, just to, just to see what, what people's response is.
I would be interested in seeing and hearing more about it. I mean, I think that it's something that we've been talking about getting done ever since I've been on the board, and probably far longer than that. And, we haven't really got that much closer.
Sorry.
Jeff?
Well, it's not your fault.
I feel responsible.
I wouldn't.
I strongly opposed it from the beginning, obviously. I mean, and I'm really disappointed, some, I was on the agenda so late, after we talked about it, I thought it was a good meeting, but, I mean, if we had, our, somebody who's on the policy committee, if we had, if that was completely updated tomorrow, our schools can operate the exact same way. I mean, our, our committee, our standing committee has been outdated forever, but it hasn't changed the way we've done anything. So, I would love it updated, but then you had, you know, all things being able, but then you had $30,000 on there, and then all of a sudden, it's not that important to me anymore. I mean, I just, I mean, I, I worry about how we're doing it. And the work, Bustin is from McFarland, our subs are from Minnesota, our policy's going to be from Ohio, our strategic plan's going to be from Florida. I mean, and then we, because we are connecting with our community, we're hiring a communication consultant from Fodalec. I mean, there's no, we're losing our community school, and it just is really starting to, because we're still going to have major discussions, and still going to have policy committee of three, four hours at a time, because these guys in Ohio aren't going to come to us with major, I mean, the, the policies that all matters, fine, but the, the things like acceptable use policy, they're not going to come to us with our values, and every, every value is different, and it's just, it seems like a huge expense, especially when we're already playing WASB. If we need WASB and them, then we don't need them.
I, I think, I've just been asking you now, but I know that, Susan, you looked at some of the Neola policies, for one specific one, that they had done for different districts, and they are all different. So, that part, I mean, they do customize them to you. It isn't true that they're going to all look the same. I mean, they are-
But they're going to need us, we're going to need to spend time-
They're going to need our input, but I think way less than. I mean, if they, if they come in and come in with their template of questions to ask about, what, what are your values on this policy? That's right there, saving Susan a couple hours, making up those questions herself, and bringing us, them to us in a committee meeting, and then trying to get, trying very hard to get both of us as committee members to engage in answering those questions, and then taking it back-
Drafting it.
And then writing the policy. I mean, it, it cuts a lot of that kind of-
I also want to clarify, I, again, I, and I understand that, but I want to clarify, the company is based out of Iowa?
Ohio.
But the, out of Ohio, the representation and the people that are working with us are all Wisconsin-based, and the individual who spoke with us is a retired Wisconsin superintendent, and the law firm is based out of Green Bay, and is centered and powered on Wisconsin law. So, I just want to make sure that it's not-
And I don't want to say, I don't, I respect the hours you put in, I really do. But I mean, we've spent a lot of time with the committee, like the bullying, for instance. We spent an hour discussing the policy, then we spent 40 minutes discussing, should be bullying and harassment, harassment and bullying. I think we could eliminate a lot of time.
See, but that's the point, you spend all that, and you still don't really get anywhere, and then all these still have to get updated.
Right.
I'm just saying, five policies, we could have made a five-minute decision, bullying and harassment, harassment and bullying, and you still have the same policy. You know, I just think we spent a lot of time.
What we could do and what we do do are grossly different things.
But I, but those discussions are going to go away here.
I just want to know.
I guess I'm, I'm in favor, because like Dan said earlier, we'll, we'll never make any headway, and we do have to have this, and we just can't brush it off and say, oh, yeah, we don't need to update that, we'll just keep it in a corner somewhere, because it does have to be updated, it should be updated, at least every, what, five, 10, five to 10 years?
Yeah, minimum.
And these, these, some of these are way outdated. But there's no way, we're going to have to spend money in order to update this regardless. We either going to have to hire somebody to sit in the room at a computer and manually go through and do it, or we pay a firm to do it, somebody who actually knows what they're doing. So, it's no way around it. I think it's a smart way to do it. I think that'll cut down on a, on a lot of the manpower that we actually currently use for the policy committee, and I, and I just think it's a, a good way to, to go about getting it done.
And I think, I think it makes, it just allows our staff to work on things that are, that they're better, that their time is better spent on. Not that this isn't important, because it is important, or we'd be doing it, but it's just, it's, it's so time consuming. What are you going to say, Susan?
I was just wondering, if we had a policy called the 10 amendments, would we still work it through and amend those?
Hmm? I didn't follow that, sorry. Was that humor? I'm not sure. I didn't get the joke. It's too late. But this is exactly just-
Rather than, let me state it so you understand it, but if you had the 10 commandments, would we, would we take as long to amend that as-
Well, again, if it-
That is a bit, they were looking.
Here's, this is exactly what happened to us on the 28th. It was 10:15 at night, and we still had to finish all the pieces of a draft for 183, and we're already two months behind on that policy.
I think the committee has basic insomnia, don't they?
Mm, cute.
I think it's, I, I, when I looked at the cost stuff, I kind of agree with Jeff. We have, we farmed it out, and Jeff, that's also, you know, the next, the next thing you know, we're going to have our, our security services coming out of Beijing or something.
Oh, for goodness sake.
But it's, but I, but I do think, the, the cost numbers that I look at, if we stick with them for a number of years, I like the model that they have to ask us questions of what we want in it, so you can make those answers without having to read protracted legalese to say, well, what does it mean, and do I want it? And do you want these elements in it? I think that, that, that will help the process.
So, I wasn't under the impression that they're going to come to our policy committee and ask us those questions?
No, they're going to ask Dan, and as I said, probably Susan, if you want to be part of that, you can be, but during the day, they'll have meetings, and he mentioned working with a district now that wants to get theirs done in six months or something, so they're having a couple, two-hour meetings per week to get it done. If we had a year as a goal, it would be a little more scaled back than that, and maybe every couple weeks, maybe they'd come in with, and I, I would guess they might take the 100 or 200 or something, and, I don't know, they'll come in and, and go through them and get input. So, that'll be before it comes to the committee. I mean, I'm assuming, I'm assuming-
Yeah, my, my thought would be that there's some, that it would be our, you know, what the appropriate administrators to make recommendations. There are others, I think, that the board committee members would want to be hands-on, like the 100 series that we currently have on board bylaws and, and, you know, that's 100% you guys making those kind of decisions. Some might be more, you know, one of you might be part of it, I, I'm not sure. I think they're flexible that way, and, you know, who's available, but in most cases, I think it's, it's really how much you're comfortable delegating to myself and the administrators to do the, you know, drafts.
Just so you know-
I don't think the policy committee, that, that pays us, yes.
Well, we might find we don't need one, we might find we would have one that would really be twice a year or something, when they do the updates. I mean, that, that might be part of the goal, we might have.
This, this is the language on the Internet student policy that was passed by the Board Policy Committee last week. It basically says, here's the sentence, "To the extent appropriate and with such additions that the administration deems necessary or appropriate, those rules and procedures shall provide notice regarding the district's attention, ownership, control, and oversight of the district's technology, network, equipment, and resources specifically, to the extent not prohibited by law, and at all times and without further notice, except as to any privacy rights that independently exist under state or federal law, no student who accesses and uses the district's electronic network, other technology-"
I don't, I don't want to take time to read through all of that now.
That's the WSB sample policy.
And I think it's not fair to read it out loud, when you look at it, it reads, it does not read that hard.
Susan, she can do it.
It is understandable, it is undoubtedly more clear the way you broke it up, so I think we're fine with that, but I don't think we need to go-
And I appreciate the credit.
But I think I'm sensing that there's some interest, so I think we will plan to bring this back.
I'm interested in hearing more.
Right, right. I understand people aren't committing, but-
Would, would any board members-
Or would you like to hear about it? Because we've really pretty much laid out what it does, so I guess I need to know what else you want to know about it, so.
Well, I guess, I don't really need to know more, maybe I should have said that, I would need to think about it more. But it's not here for approval right now, anyway.
Because with the cost-
We can have a representative here, if that might be helpful to answer questions, or-
I can't imagine how that would be helpful.
Okay. I'll be, I'll be honest, I would be much more interested if we weren't committed to WASB, because then I see $4,000.
Right.
It's not that much money, I'm sorry. And the overall student things, it's really hard.
And I don't think it's totally useless, because I go and look at it, yeah.
Well, we can still avail ourselves on this.
We don't need to do all this.
All right, then we will move on to future meetings, and our, we have a teacher meeting with me, we, just a reminder, have the school board workshop next Wednesday at 6:00.
And we will have food available, for those of you coming straight from work, available at 5:30, and also during the workshop, if you, if you can, if you get here early, so.
Do we, do we have an agenda for that?
We're still working on it.
I just, I just wanted to make a comment, I was just curious, okay.
And it will, it mostly, a lot of it's communication protocols, it's the things we've talked about that we need to work on, and we will, well, we'll talk about it, we won't be probably doing our goal setting for this year, that might be an outgrowth of-
And just a reminder, we do need to schedule our next teacher compensation committee. We forgot to do that before we left last time, so on those afterwards, we're going to get together.